Or maybe you can text them or something, just because we have forty-four attendees now. Okay, so, um, welcome, everybody. This is the March twenty-fifth meeting of the Berkeley Board of Education. And I, we usually start with Ms. Pacheco, who's our secretary, giving some brief announcements.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear approximately thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, which will end at around ten PM, there will be another opportunity for additional public comment. So if you don't get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end of the meeting. To comment by video conference, click on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when the public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When called upon, you will be unmuted. After a lot of time, you will then be remuted. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When called upon, you will be unmuted. After a lot of time, you will then be remuted. The board president usually will call our students first. Please note that if there are a lot of people who want to make public comment, not everyone who raises their hand will get to speak. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at two or three minutes per speaker. On an individual's basis, the board president also has a discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time has elapsed, you will hear your time is up. If you are still speaking when your time is up, you are allowed to finish your sentence. But please do not try to speak beyond your time. We understand that there are really important issues that many people feel very passionate about. However, in order to be fair to all speakers, and so we can hear as many speakers as possible, the board president will ask you to stop once your time has elapsed and will ask that the mic be turned off if it is necessary. Thank you.
Carol, do you wanna? Ms. Pacheco, will you go ahead and say that and translate that into Spanish?
Claro. Cuando estás aquí, voy a proporcionarles un breve resumen sobre esta junta. Después de unos procedimientos preliminares, un periodo de treinta minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Luego habrá otra oportunidad para escuchar comentarios de parte de comités y uniones distritales, seguidos por comentarios de parte de la Mesa Directiva y el Superintendente. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las diez, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para comentarios de parte de miembros de la audiencia que no pudieron proporcionar comentario durante la oportunidad. Para dar comentario durante la conferencia de video, por favor, presione el botón que dice Levante la mano en el abajo donde está el botón de participantes. Para hacer un comentario por teléfono, por favor, oprima el número nueve. El presidente de la Mesa Directiva determinará si va a otorgar dos o tres minutos por orador. El presidente también tiene la discreción de otorgar minutos adicionales a quienes requieran traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Durante su comentario, se dará cuenta durante su comentario.
Se te dará cuenta?
No aplica a esta parte de la junta, así que voy a leer la segunda hora, la siguiente oración. Por favor, trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Entendemos que hay diferencias, cuestiones que son muy importantes para diferentes personas. Sin embargo, pedimos que respete el tiempo otorgado de manera que podamos escuchar a la mayoría del público posible. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Pacheco. Okay, so, um, we're now, uh, I'm gonna spend a couple minutes just talking about the meeting. So, the way that we're going to do this is, first, we're gonna have comments from people from the unions, or from the unions, and then from people on committees. Jay, do we have anyone from committees who wants to talk?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, so, and then after the unions, we will have, will have opportunities for all of us to say a few words, and the superintendent. Then we are going to, in case you don't have the agenda in front of you, and you can access it online, but, um, we're gonna do the consent calendar, and I'm just gonna read off the things on this consent calendar if we pass this agenda. Approval of Human Resources Report, approved listings of warrants issued in February, payroll warrants issued in February, approval of contract for non-public agency services for the nineteen-twenty school year, approval of contract amendment for residential non-public school for twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty school year normative services, acceptance of gifts and donations, and approval of contracts, purchase orders for service contract, services contract. So these are the items that, you know, our, our school district has been working incredibly hard. And so these are items that they're bringing to us for approval that we, that we've agreed don't require discussion. And then the two action items are district plans related to the COVID-nineteen and distance learning. There's gonna be a ninety-minute presentation offered, I believe, by our superintendent. And, and then updated budget development calendar. And then there was one discussion item about the Berkeley Recruitment and Retention Act. And we have decided to forward that to another meeting, so. What I'm gonna do is ask for somebody to make a motion to pass the agenda without number thirteen. Oh, I'm sorry. After, after those discussion items, we'll have another opportunity for people to talk. And then, um, if we want to make any other comments, and then an adjournment. And the only thing I do want to make sure to say is, when I call for public comment, what you're gonna do is go into the participant, the participant button on your, on your computer, and then the, um, all of the, all of the names of all the attendees and the panelists, we're panelists, you guys are, and the public, our attendees are gonna come up. And then what I'm gonna do is, we're each gonna, each of the public comment, people speaking at public comment are gonna have two minutes. And I do, what I'm gonna ask is first to have the students raise their hand, if there's any students that want to give testimony, because those always come first. And then after that, I will ask everybody else to raise their hand. And, you know, we'll have to see how many people are interested in talking before we can decide if we can hear from all of you. Are there any, is that clear to everybody? Did you ask for a motion to accept the agenda first? Yeah, no, no. Well, first, I just wanted to go over that a little bit, so. I guess, I'm gonna assume that that's clear, and if not, you can raise your hand to ask a question. So yes, do I have a motion from somebody to?
I think we, did we call the roll? Did Ms. Pacheco call the roll?
Good point, Vice President Alper. So, um, Ms. Pacheco, will you go ahead and call the roll?
Yes. President Appel?
Here.
Vice President Alper?
Here.
Director Brown?
Present.
Director Leva Cutler?
Present.
Director Sinai?
Here.
And student Rector Hemp is participating, and we're working on getting her set up as a panelist.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else I missed? Vice President Alper?
No, you're good.
All right. So, um, with that being said, is there somebody who will make the motion to, to pass the agenda with, with item thirteen excluded?
I'll make the motion to pass the agenda.
With item thirteen excluded?
With item thirteen.
Is there a second? I'll second. Seconded by Director Brown. Carol, Ms. Pacheco, would you mind taking a roll call vote?
Not at all. Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Leva Cutler?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
President Appel?
Yes. Okay, so, um, we're off to a good start. So now we're gonna go ahead, next thing on the agenda is to do, oh, is to report out on the closed session, and I'm gonna ask Vice President Alper to do that. And while, while he's doing that, if the students who want to give testimony, can press at the bottom of your, oh, I don't see it now. At the bottom of the participant row, oh, wait. I don't see a hand raising thing for them, for attendees. Do you got, what I want is for the attendees who are listening and want to, the students who want to speak, if you can raise your hand. I'm assuming people can see that, and, um, so I'm gonna have the students go while Ty Alper is reporting back.
Okay, um, thank you, President Appel. There was only week, the closed session was called to order at seven o'clock. There was only one item, item three-point-one-point-one, case number CL number two-zero-zero-four-zero-two-eight-five-one-five. There's a motion by Director Leva Cutler to approve the staff recommendation, second by Director Sinai. All voted in favor, and the motion passed five to zero. And that concludes the report from closed session.
Excellent job, Vice President Alper. You must do this every day.
Thank you. I practiced all day.
There you go. Excuse me. Okay, so now I'm gonna go ahead and start closed session. So I was told by somebody who was, uh, who's on as an attendee that you, you can see how to raise your hand, so I'm just gonna ask any students if there are any on who wish to speak. If you're on the Zoom app, just go ahead and raise your hand. And if you are on calling by phone, um, just do star nine, and, um, our host will inform me that you want to speak. Okay, I see, oh, Vanessa Di Marrero. President Appel, do you see our comments? Our union comments didn't go first? We're going first to public comment? Oh. Oh, I'm, um, actually, oh, I'm so sorry. You're right. Can you hang on a second, Vanessa? And I'm gonna go ahead and call on Matt Meyer, because I, I'm sorry, I just read the agenda wrong. But if he's right, the union comments do come first, and I believe the only union president or union representative who's here is Matt Meyer for the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. Matt, we cannot hear you. I cannot hear you. I don't know, Jay, maybe?
No, we can't hear.
If, I don't know if you can do anything to? To help?
Great. I just got unmuted.
Oh, great.
You guys have to, um, you, you control it.
Yeah.
Well, someone there does.
Yes.
Um, okay, um, thanks for this meeting. Looks a lot like all my meetings and for the past two weeks. Happy to be speaking with you. I haven't really had time to really prepare a formal speech, but I really just felt like I wanted to be here to kind of sort of express how hard our teachers and counselors and staff members have been working these last couple of weeks, getting, uh, distance learning up and running, checking in on their students. We've had grade level teams meeting, we've had counselors making sure that students who are in, in family situations aren't great, have someone to check in with. You know, curriculum is going out, uh, there's been staff meetings this week, you know, all kinds of things are happening. Uh, I also wanted to say that BFT has been working closely with the superintendent and other administrators on, uh, really making sure that this plan, uh, that is gonna be presented today, sort of, you know, represents our best thinking, uh, right now at this very dynamic situation where we really don't know what's gonna happen from day to day. So we really wanted to collaborate on a plan that sort of, you know, respected the seriousness of what we're all dealing with and also keeping students first and making sure that they can get the best education possible, given all the different limitations that, uh, that we're dealing with. So you'll get a lot of details in this ninety-minute session that's coming up. But I, I, you know, I just really wanted to say that it's been, uh, great working with Dr. Stevens on this plan. And I've included, you know, my executive board sort of knew the, the big generalizations of what was going on, but I think that, um, teachers are gonna be very happy to, to really get started. They, uh, they wanna get started, they've been doing things, you know, but it hasn't been formalized. Uh, and now finally it can be formalized, and there's gonna, the way we made the plan is that there's just gonna be a lot of consistency that is happening. We wanted to make sure they given our different access to technology, uh, different grade levels. You know, some grade levels don't even use computers at all, right? So, uh, you know, like K through TK through two, you know, it's like a whole different situation. The shelter in place, really complicated things, you can't make packets, you can't get them out. You know, so, uh, really trying to, it just took a little, a, a small number of days to really think about how can we make every grade level work. Uh, and I think teachers are gonna be really pleased, uh, that they can participate, that they're gonna be doing things with their students, their students are gonna feel like they're part of the community. We're gonna have, you know, Zoom, Google Hangout, things happening, there's gonna be Google Classroom stuff, there's gonna be professional development. Uh, and, you know, we don't know how long we're gonna be in this situation, but we're just gonna make the best of it and do the best we can, given, you know, what's happening. So, thanks, and, you know, hope to be back at the next board meeting to tell you how it's going.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, that's great. Um, I, oh, our student board member Stella Hem has joined us. Welcome. Oh, you're mute, you're?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so, um, I now want to ask for any attendee who's a student who would like to speak, make a comment. There had been one person. But that is, I mean, her, I guess she doesn't want to speak anymore. Is there, are there any students who do?
There was a student, Vanessa, uh, was, uh, going in for her daughter Carmen. Vanessa, if you're still there?
Vanessa Marrero?
Hold on, let me see if I can, she might still be muted, one moment. So many people have to scroll all the way down to V. Okay, here we go. Vanessa, I'm gonna unmute you now. Okay, you should be able to speak. Vanessa and Carmen.
They're muted.
Okay, trying again. All right, go ahead, try again.
Okay. Hi, thank you. I'm here with Carmen. I'm Carmen's mom, and she is, is extremely shy, so she thought she would be able to type. But I want to empower her to express her concerns about what is happening with COVID-nineteen. Would you like to talk? Okay, so. So she, um, Carmen is a Washington student, she loves Washington, and she really misses school. And she really is trying to, um, use a schedule, do her IXL, read her log, I mean, she has been incredibly dedicated. But she feels that she needs more structure. Um, and she is very upset about the print, the superintendent's announcement that school will not be in session until May first. And I did explain to her about this virus, and, you know, we all understand why school is closed, but I just wanted to, you know, empower, um, this sharing to you all that you have an eleven-year-old student out here who really is looking forward to going back, or at least having some structured approach so that she can continue her learning.
Thank you so much for voicing that, because, is your daughter's name Carmen?
Yeah, Carmen.
Because Carmen, we're actually hearing from a lot of parents and students that, you know, they also are disappointed, and, um, and so I think it's really great that you came so you could voice that. You know, something you share with other students, which is, you know, that you really miss school, and, you know. We're, uh, we're gonna hear more about what the plans are coming up from our superintendent, but I just wanted to, to thank you for coming and sharing your perspective. So now, um, if there are any other, um, people who'd like to speak, now would be the time to raise your hand. Oh, wait, you're, I'm not seeing hands. Somebody said. Okay. Carol, did you say there is one person? It's number seven? Oh, I'm sorry, you were, you were responding to a question I had. So it looks like there are no public comments, there's no, you know, you'll have an opportunity to speak again at the end of the meeting.
President Appel?
Uh-huh.
There is a chat from a Yuri S. who is saying, hi, can I speak?
Oh, yes, I'm actually gonna call on Kathleen Marte, and, um, and then Yuri S., you'll go, oh, I'm sorry. Jay opened Yuri S. first, so why don't, oh.
Hello?
Why don't you go ahead, Yuri S., and?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, okay. Hi, um, I'm a mother of a BHS student, she's a ninth grader. And, um, so, is it true that, when you guys resume, when the schools resume in May, obviously, there's not gonna be enough, you know, it's gonna be a very short school year probably, if it goes by the regular schedule, right? And, um, I, there seems to be a rumor going around with just the students, possibly, that, um, when the school resumes, anything, actually, after the scheduled date of like June, whenever, would be optional. Is that true? Um, in, in other words, um, will the school year end on time, or, or will it, would it actually extend into the summer? That is the question.
Um, I think, Yuri, thank you for the question. Um, I do know, oh, I do know that there's obviously questions about like that, but we can't really respond to questions that come up during public comment, but.
Oh, I see.
But I think that, um, Superintendent Stevens will make sure to, to speak to that when he gives his presentation. Okay?
Okay, great. Thanks a lot.
No problem. Okay, so next, next I have Kathleen Marte.
She's muted.
Um, well, it says talking permitted.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, everyone, good evening. It's so wonderful to be able to see everyone here, and I want to, um, thank, um, those who made it possible for teachers to go into the schools today for, very briefly and safely, to get materials. I was able to pick up books and workbooks and things for, um, some of my most needy students and some newcomers and drop off bags of materials for them, and I feel like that was really helpful. In speaking with one of the parents during the drop-off, she has a kindergartner, and was wondering about the Chromebooks, and I said, I didn't know. I explained that we're starting with distributing to high schoolers, and I was wondering if possible for like, for that grade level, if there would be possibly iPads distributed. So that was my question. Thank you so much.
Um, again, Superintendent Stevens can speak to that, but I feel comfortable saying that, you know, the, the Chromebooks we already own, the iPads we would have to buy. So, um, I, Superintendent Stevens can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that, you know, we're using the computers that we already own, that, and we have a one-to-one policy, so most of the time, you know, so there, we have plenty of Chromebooks, and so if students need them, they should let us know. Okay, so now, um, I have Sabrina, who I can't see your whole last name, oh, Pennell. Sabrina Pennell, do you want to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Um, I haven't been to a school board meeting in a long time, but I'm a parent of, um, of Raven Elliott. He's a senior, uh, in BIHS at Berkeley High. And his concern, and of course, you know, another student mentioned rumors, that, well, Mom, I heard that we're just gonna get a pass, and we don't have to graduate, you know, we're just getting a pass to graduate. We don't have to finish the semester. So, I mean, that's kind of what's going on with the, you know, around and, and rumor talk land with the seniors, so my, um, my request is just to hear more information about what's gonna happen with the class of twenty-twenty.
Okay, well, that is actually Superintendent Stevens' long item tonight, so just.
Oh, great.
Um, and I just would like to know, is there anyone else who wants to make a comment? Raise your hand if you do. Or press star nine, if you're on the phone. Oh, Hasmit. Hasmit Minassian, um, if you'd like to speak, why don't you go ahead and take the floor?
Yes, thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, everybody, really nice to see your faces. Hi, Estella. So here's the thing I wanted to say, that I was waiting for someone else to say. I just want to thank you guys, really from the bottom of our hearts, as teachers and as staff. This is a really difficult moment for everyone, I just want to acknowledge that, and say that, um, Superintendent Stevens and President, Principal rather, although she should be President Schwang, have been doing an incredible job with communication, and I think that, right now, in a super uncertain moment, where you're getting information, in some cases, seconds before the rest of us are, distilling that information, figuring out how to get it to staff, allowing staff to communicate to families, allowing families to communicate to kids. This is really complex communication, and you are handling it with a grace, um, that I am taking notes on. And so Superintendent Stevens, I really just want to thank you for sort of jumping into this community and knowing exactly what they need. And, uh, Principal Schwang, I really want to thank her for the way that she has communicated so consistently, so steadfastly to the staff. And, you know, we're all trying to figure it out as we go along. I know that people have questions that are, um, super detailed, like the two previous parents. Um, I'm getting questions like that, obviously, in my inbox as well. And I just want to, I want everyone to take a collective breath and understand that, um, the information is going very rapidly. And so what we know now is maybe not what we know in two weeks. And, um, I really hope that people have their sort of flexibility and adjustment compasses well, well tuned. Do you tune a compass? No, I don't think you tune a compass, but just well, um, well magnetized for this moment. So I just really, all this is, is an appreciation, a huge thank you to the work you've done so far, to the, um, and to the amount of stress that you've probably been carrying and holding yourselves. Um, and I just want you to know that we are all in this with you guys. The staff is super on board, we are a team, and we are in it together. So I just wanted to, um, oh, and also, I'm a teacher at Berkeley High, I didn't say that part, I'm a, sorry. Teacher leader of the Universal Ninth Grade, Ethic Studies Social Living Teacher, who is also the parent of a ninth grader, so I wear a lot of hats. Um, thanks, you guys, we'll be listening.
Thank you, Hasmit. So I see no other, no other people raising their hand to, oh, wait, oh, that, that is Hasmit. So if there's anybody else, this is your last, well, this is your last chance for now, although you will have a chance at the end, which I think should be at ten or before ten. Seeing nobody, um, next. Seeing nobody next is the opportunity for the board members to say a few words. So I'm gonna go ahead and call on you and we're just gonna do it that way. So I'm gonna start with Director Sinai.
Good evening. I too want to express my sincere appreciation to President Appel and to Superintendent Stevens for all of the work that you guys have been doing over the last few weeks with all of the cabinet and our labor partners, because, you know, I work in healthcare. And so I know what it's like to have this completely absorb your life. We say now that we can't even remember life before COVID. And so again, sincere appreciation and also sincere appreciation to all of the families of BUSD for the patience that you have held. This is a complete recalibration of public education. And it's only been a week and a half, I think. Seems like somebody said, you know, how much of a year's gone by in the last week. And there's so much to do. I look forward to tonight's presentation. I actually am kind of, I'm spending my life on Zoom, so it's bittersweet to see the school board on Zoom. But I'm so glad we have this technology to be able to continue to meet and to do the important work that the district requires. So I think that's, that's where I'll leave it tonight with a sincere appreciation for everybody at all levels, for the valiant effort people are making, those who are staying home with their kids and trying to juggle their work and become home educators to the people who are developing the curriculum. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. I'm gonna call on you, Director Brown. We don't see your face anymore. There you are.
You're muted, Director Brown?
You're muted. There you go. Better? Yeah. Okay. First, I'd just like to say thank you to all of those who've joined us tonight during the Zoom board meeting. And I want to echo Julie's sentiments. I'm really thankful to our district, to Superintendent Stevens, to Jay, and also to President Appel for setting this up and ensuring that we have a platform to do the necessary work that we, that we still need to do. I'd like to dedicate my comment time tonight to our teachers. And so first, I'd like to say thank you to our teachers. Despite this scary and super unfamiliar time, many of you are being the heroes that we need. And by that, I mean, many of you are going above and beyond to make contact with your students, to send an email, to provide them with work, and to provide them with some type of support for distance learning. And after the May 1st announcement today, I share some of your sentiments, knowing that we have a long road ahead of us. But through it all, you're maintaining the idea that our students should always come first. And so I'm very thankful for that. I'm also thankful to Superintendent Stevens, who has worked extremely hard and consulted with BFT members, consulted with administrators and principals to come up with our district's distance learning plan. And that'll be shared this evening. So help is on the way. But for our teachers who are, who are doing something, thank you so much for closing the gap and for always prioritizing the needs of our students. Thank you. Thank you, Director Brown. I'm gonna call on Student Director Hemp. Do you have any comments?
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. So I don't want to take up too much time, but there are quite a few things that I wanted to say. Just while, you know, we all have a time, I mean, an opportunity to see each other. It seems like our last meeting was months ago. It's honestly pretty insane how the time has been passed in the past years. I first wanted to start my comments on just acknowledging my grade. I'm a senior right now at Berkeley High, which is, it's, it's hard on us. A lot of people are really sad, but as much as I want to acknowledge that, it is also super important to, you know, be looking out for the older folks in our community right now, and those who are at risk in other ways, such as those who have immunocompromises and, you know, such stuff like that. And so I just really wanted to speak on that for a second, because it's been something that we've been talking about in many of my circles in my life, whether it's been like my class Zoom sessions or just talking to my friends on the phone. I wanted to say, you know, thank you to the healthcare workers and the emergency responders, the grocery store employees, mailmen, waste management folks, just people who are still working through this time. It's, it's just insane that there are people who go to work every single day and, you know, like risk their health so that our city can stay alive and awake and moving. I wanted to say thanks to the board and really, really Ms. Schwang too. I know that someone spoke on that earlier, Ms. Minassian, thank you. But I spoke to Ms. Schwang, actually, I think it may have been on that Thursday, or it was Wednesday. No, it was, it was, it was Thursday, last day of school. And she really just made me feel so grounded and just so comfortable to like talk about all this stuff. And she's just an amazing principal. We're so lucky to have her. And Dr. Stevens, oh my goodness, you really came in during an insane year. And there has been so much on your plate since the second that you walked to the door. It's wild, but it's, it's so, so appreciated. And the teachers who are, you know, staying in touch with their students right now and really, really working hard to like actually reach out is, is super, super valuable. I'm in, I'm in CAS, the small learning community, and they made an Instagram to stay in touch with us. And it is the cutest thing in the whole world. It's so funny. And I know that some, some Aha! teachers did that as well. And it was just, it was a small act, but just so, so appreciated. And I just wanted to say, like, finally, this time has really brought forth a lot of like self-reflection. And I think a lot of people are experiencing that. And just me personally, I'm really starting to see, you know, just like how grateful I am to come from the community that I do come from, you know, Berkeley and like BUSD. And then also, not only like am I grateful to have come from BUSD, but I'm so grateful to be a part of it right now and to have the people that are in this community to support and to look towards and come together, but you know, as much as we can. And yeah, in hard times like this, I feel really lucky. So that's all I'm gonna say tonight. But thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for coming and for sharing that with us, Director Hemp, because.
Of course.
Director Leva Cutler.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for all the comments to our staff, to our families, to our superintendent. I'm in the childcare community. So in terms of, I know that our early childhood teachers have been reaching out to the young ones. This has been a struggle because it's, many of our early childhood teachers want to be there for their children. And so I know everybody's thinking creatively and out of the box and even more so adding to each other's ideas in terms of how can we make sure to reach out to all of our students, our students who are special ed, our youngest, our youngest children who are three-year-olds and four-year-olds. How do we provide a learning opportunity that's not a lot of screen time, which a lot of families try to avoid? So it's been, it's been a, it's almost like a roller coaster ride that we're all on and experiencing together, but we're also very learned, learning. All of us are learning right now. I'm learning this Zoom. And so it's, it's a great opportunity to expand our knowledge, expand our experience and our talents. And together, I think we can get through this. We will get through this. And it helps very much to have a community like Berkeley that really embraces all of us. And, and I want to special thanks to our certified and our classified, who are all doing their part every day, trying to figure out how to support our students and, and our families too, because our families, you know, and those teachers who are teaching our students and also have children at the table, being taught by their teachers. Kudos to you. I know we're all learning some new talents in, in terms of not classroom management on the screen and also at home. So, you know, my, my heart goes out to you and I wish we could be there for you a little bit more. So thank you. And I look forward to the presentation today.
Thank you, Director Leva Cutler. Vice President Alper.
Thanks, President Appel. I'll be brief. My colleagues are very eloquent in their appreciation for so many of the people, as Director Hemp said, who are going to work every day, you know, risking their own health to ensure that the essential services of the district, including nutrition services, are being continued. And we're gonna hear tonight about how instructional services can, can continue in this prolonged period that we don't know the, the length of. And I know that parents and guardians and students and teachers and staff are anxious to hear about those plans and, and as President Meyer said, anxious to implement them. So I know we have a lot of, there's a lot of questions and a lot of challenges ahead of us, but with President Appel's leadership and Dr. Stevens' leadership and our union partner leadership and all of the cabinet and all of our employees, I'm really confident that we will be able to meet these challenges as, as others have said. And I think even though it's kind of repetitive, it's helpful in sort of these scary, sort of unsettling times to express that gratitude to the, to the people who are doing the work every day. And that's many of the people on this call. And including, you know, and I'm looking at the numbers, 151 people who have joined us, which is, you know, more than are usually watching on YouTube or at our board meetings. So I'm not suggesting that this become the future of our board meetings, but I am gratified that so many people were able to figure out how to log in and listen and participate. And maybe, usually we don't have a lot of public comment after, in the second public comment period, but maybe tonight, people will be able to stick around and let us hear their thoughts about the presentation, the questions and the discussion that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Alper. So I'm gonna go ahead and give my comments now. And so first of all, I'm not sure, I mean, I know people have expressed their gratitude to me. I'm basically just spending time, you know, learning from the administration. And I have to say that Superintendent Stevens, as well as the Assistant Superintendent, the Associate Superintendent and everybody, Natasha Berry, like the people who are working really close, closely with him, they have been working so hard to figure out our next steps. And, you know, at first I was communicating with Superintendent Stevens about, you know, communicating some of the concerns expressed by parents or teachers even. And then what I realized is that what Superintendent Stevens, together with Matt Myers and others have done, and our principals have done, which I think is really unique and very, that we should be very proud of, is that they're developing an education plan that, that is equitable, that has equity as its base. So it's not like thinking about, oh, what can we do, like when people don't show up for class? Or what can we do after? I think they're trying to anticipate a lot of things beforehand. So like, last week, we had, they had done something, I guess, Principal Schwang had done something, or maybe we did as a district, and the students responded to a questionnaire. And so we gave out, we lent, we lent computers to students last week at the high school, this week at the middle schools, and then after spring break on April 6th, we'll be, we'll be turning to the elementary schools. And I just, I mean, I've talked to teachers in other districts and they're like, they're just, their students just don't have any way to access any online learning. So here in Berkeley, we have some people, obviously, we have a huge income gap. And so there's some people who, you know, their kids have computers and that's great. And there's some who, who need the computers to be able to access the lesson plans that are, that are being put together. And so I wanted to join everyone else in thanking the Superintendent Stevens and the rest of the folks you've been working with. And I wanted to say that I really think that what you've come up with and what you're coming up with and what the teachers will continue to come up with is really, will be a model for how to do this with equity front and center. And that's, that's how our district is. And I think those are values we all share. And so I mostly just wanted to, to thank you for, and to recognize that and to thank you for, for making sure or trying to make sure that as many of our students are, that all of our students are served. So if you're a parent listening in and, you know, you feel like you, you know, you're kind of frustrated because there hasn't been, there hasn't been more district-wide guidance, it's coming. That's what Superintendent Stevens is gonna talk about. And what's so great about it is that it's gonna be accessible, hopefully, to every single student. Okay, so with that being said, I did want to see if any other, we don't usually do this, but I did want to just see if any of the other BUSD staff who are on this call, like the Assistant Superintendent, the Associate Superintendent, the Public Information Officer, or anybody else would like to say a few words. There's no pressure, but if you do, you can just raise your hand and I'll call on you. Okay, so hearing from none of them. Now, let's turn to the.
President Appel?
Yes?
What about Dr. Stevens?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Stevens, I was so ready to hear you on the next item, but thank you, Ty. And Dr. Stevens, if you want to go ahead and make your comments up.
Thanks very much, President Appel. I hope everybody's able to hear me. I will be making two different presentations a little bit later in the evening. One with a fair amount of detail about the developing distance learning plan for Berkeley Unified School District. Another, more an update to the board about the current status of our budget building process, work that we were trying to complete prior to COVID-19, and that we must complete in any case under these circumstances. What I wanted to do is both also express my gratitude to the just huge variety of people who are coming forward in the community to offer many, many forms of help. That includes from inside the district, every member of the cabinet team, all of our principals, our central office administrators, teachers have been reaching out over and over again with lots of thoughtful ideas and then just stories about the acts of goodwill that they're performing right now. We have lots of folks on the front lines, particularly our nutrition service workers who never skip to eat. They were out there having modified their entire program with only about 12 hours notice, giving out meals on the very first day of our school closures back on Friday, March 13th. And then to all of the families who have been both tolerating very different circumstances, I just want to express our gratitude for giving us this patience for these few days to try and turn the world right side up again. It truly has just been upended for all of us. And then finally, what I'd like to do is just acknowledge that just the sheer depth of emotion that every single one of us is confronting right now. Not a person that I'm speaking to is expressing some version of anxiety or fear or frustration or trepidation about both what's happening and what we all know could come in our direction in the weeks to come. So I will not be speaking much about the emotions as we get into the sort of technical details of the plans shortly, but wanted to acknowledge that this is just a moment of anxiety for all of us and that we all appreciate the sense of community that you've proffered our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Stevens. I'm sorry, I almost skipped you. But luckily, Ty is keeping me honest. Anyhow, so we are now gonna move to our consent items. To, I guess I'll just go ahead and make a motion to, to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Vice President Alper. Ms. Pacheco, would you mind taking a roll call? Oh, I don't see, oh, there you are.
Not at all. Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vivek Bhattacharya, Leva Cutler?
Yes.
Student Director Hemp?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
President Appel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna move on to our action items. The first one is what we've all been waiting for. I think, Director Stevens, do you have anyone you're presenting with or you're doing this alone? You're, you're on mute.
I myself am getting used to these new conventions. I may be at times joined by a few folks and that may be. I may be at times joined by a few folks and that may be mostly in the question and answer session, but I'm planning to do the presentations myself.
Great. So, let's go to 12.1, District Plans Related to COVID-19 and Distance Learning.
Great. And I hope you'll bear with me for a moment as I share the screen that I'm working with.
I'm sorry, I don't have my agenda. Is this the one for student families or teachers and staff? Which one's first?
The first one, well, I don't know, he, this is one agenda item. So, I think Brent will leave it, lead us through how he's going to discuss them. It's one agenda item on the agenda.
Yeah, so I, I'm, President Alper, I'll first be moving over to a presentation on the district's efforts related to coronavirus and then distance learning. And then the second of the two agenda items is Proposed Adjustments to the Budget Schedule. You'll bear with me just one moment. And I believe if all is working well, you should be able to now see the presentation. President Alper, does that, does that look right?
Yes, that's good. Brent?
Great. So, I'm going to jump in. So, what I intend to cover is sort of two topics. A very small portion of this evening's presentation will talk just about the, the recent developments with COVID-19 over the last five days or so since we last offered an update to the Board of Education just last Thursday. The majority of the presentation will be unpacking a very recently developed plan as it relates to distance learning for the entirety of the district. I should say before I do any of this that many, many educators have reached out to their classes, have begun on their own to offer a variety of distance learning experiences to students. So, this plan is meant to create a more even playing field, both for our educators and all of our families. And so, I hope you, that you, many families will find that sort of first order questions are answered in this plan. And then I also want to recognize that for every question that we answer in this plan, there's likely two more that we'll have to resolve as we go along through this together. First, just to observe the sort of progression of the outbreak here in the Bay Area. When we first presented on COVID-19 only two weeks ago, we had observed two cases here in Berkeley. By Thursday of last week, that was three, the number is now 11. Here in Alameda County, that number has moved from three to 35 to 124 again, and only a two-week period of time. In California, we've moved from 157 cases to 2,660 cases, from four deaths to 58 deaths. And in the United States, over a two-week period, we've gone from 938 to 9,300 to 6,000 cases. And there you can see the number of total deaths recorded due to COVID-19 across the country. All of this is to say that the outbreak is expanding very rapidly and in some places of the country appears to be doubling roughly every, every week. Today's important news
Tell you that while we were on this call, I got, I got a notice that the US has hit 1,000 deaths.
Thank you for that information. These things are changing minute by minute. Today, we all received important information from the county health officers of seven Bay Area counties. This includes Alameda County where we're located. Those county health officers, in collaboration with the county superintendents of education, have made a decision to extend the school closure period through May 1st. This was consistent with news we heard on Monday from LA Unified and is more consistent with several large districts across the country, including Boston, which went out until April 20th, and New York City, which initially called it schools closed until April 27th. We regret hearing this news. This is all coming as a bit of a shock to us and seems to be this week's sort of added shock in addition to all the others that we've experienced previously. During the first week of our response, at the point that we did not yet know that we might be looking at extended school closures, back on Monday, March 16th, was when BUSD was able to put up curated compendium of online educational resources on our website, berkeschools.net. Within a few days, we were administering a survey to over 600 educators here in the district to try and get an accurate sense of individual teacher's circumstances, their needs, and their best thinking about what distance learning could look like, not only for themselves as individual teachers, but across the span of our district. And then a lot of our work has had to do with analyzing daily and often hourly updates from a variety of organizations that includes the federal government, the state, the county Office of Education, our colleagues in the Department of Public Health, as well as a whole variety of professional and legal organizations that are offering not comprehensive guidance on the entirety of our situation, but oftentimes, small piecemeal guidance about an element of the issues that we're experiencing. So, with that, I'm going to turn into an explanation of Berkeley's Distance Learning Plan. For folks who have checked out the online agenda, there are two documents available. One is the slide deck that I'll be reviewing. There's also a 12-page printed version of this same plan. And we will be distributing this plan broadly to the community in the morning. And then we'll also be speaking with press and speaking with lots of members of our own staff about the elements of this plan. Because you're seeing it here this evening does not mean that all 1,500 employees in Berkeley Unified have yet seen it. And so, we've got a fairly complicated communication challenge in front of us, not only to distribute it, but to ensure our employees in a coherent way understand the elements of the plan. So, I'm, in the presentation, we'll be addressing seven components that are described in written form in this plan. They include an overview of the feedback that we received last week from our educators, which proved to be value in thinking about the overall design of a district-wide plan. I'll talk briefly about what we're doing now to ensure access to technology for our students and families. Then we'll go into probably the area of most interest for families and staff. These are the elements of our distance learning supports. This will include particular attention to equity supports for English language learners and students with disabilities. We'll also talk about the role of a number of our ancillary staff members in implementing the plan. We've done some preliminary thinking as well about how we'll monitor student participation in distance learning. Some preliminary thinking as well about grading course credit and graduation to questions earlier in, in the evening. Professional development supports for teachers. And then finally, talk briefly about the roles we conceive of for teachers, teacher leaders, school administrators and central office employees. We did receive over 600 responses back within about a 24-hour period from our educators. They proved to be very instructive in understanding the circumstances that our education educators are now facing. No surprise, they turn out to be very similar to the same circumstances that parents are facing. About 60% of our teachers reported that because of the rushed closure of schools that they were without access or had limited access to the planning materials that they say they need to be able to sustain education from their homes. 40% now report that they're in caregiving situations that will substantially limit their ability to participate in distance learning experiences. And then when viewed as a whole, our K-12 teachers seem to point to several design features of the district plan that we have tried to build upon. That includes the distribution of electronic resources to students through Google Classroom. Their teachers responded very favorably to the idea of the district curating curriculum resources centrally and sending them out to teachers, so that not every individual teacher was responsible for creating digital content for their classes. They also responded favorably to weekly assignments as opposed to daily or hourly assignments and then wanted to take advantage of the free broad library of electronic resources that we have both found and continue to find. This slide speaks to the efforts that we're making right now to distribute technology across our district. We've established three unique mechanisms by which a family or student can request a loaner Chromebook. That includes sending an email. Folks can use their phone to do this. We've also established a Chromebook hotline. That number is 510-644-8931. We've got a regular set of volunteers checking that hotline every single day. Families can also fill out an e-form on berkeschools.net/connecting. That as well can be completed on your phone. You don't need a computer to do that. You can see as well to the left on the screen, the distribution schedule that we are, have established and are keeping. That includes starting with our secondary students at Berkeley High, BTA and BIS. We continue those distributions. We've moved now into middle school distributions at King Willard and Longfellow. And then because of the extent of the distribution process, we're contemplating moving to elementary schools after spring break. We had wanted to accelerate our elementary distribution, but recognized that given both the quantity of computers needed at that level and the, just the technical details of dismantling carts and cataloging of our Chromebooks, we simply weren't better, able to do better. We also recognize that some teachers are in need of a Chromebook. And so, we've included here on the slide ways that computer, teachers can access one. That includes submitting a help desk ticket or just speaking with your principal. So, now to jump into the elements of the district learning plan. What we plan to do is bring together small teams of teacher volunteers. Essentially, we're calling them distance learning, lead teachers, whose job each week will be to curate weekly sets of educational activities for each grade level or for each key course in the district. We're contemplating doing this at the pre-K level through elementary and middle school. And then as students get into the secondary grades from six all the way through 12, these teams will be working to curate course content, not grade level content. So, by that I mean common math courses, common Spanish courses, common English language arts courses. We have some guidance about how many hours per week of activity we like to see at each of these grade levels. No one would be surprised to learn that the hours per week increase as students get older and become more capable of independent work. I'll go through some of those details. So, at the pre-K level, what we can see is that we're just now putting together some preliminary guidance about what these distance learning activity sets might look like. We imagine that they will include some key learning objectives written in human being language, not, not educator speak, but a language that's accessible to parents and students. Recommendations for a weekly schedule for distance learning, things that lots of parents have been eager to see. Suggestions about how students and parents can connect those learning objectives to thoughtfully chosen online learning activities that are available through our website. They'll also include specific lessons in a variety of subject areas with readings and writing materials. And then we also imagine that would be helpful if our education teams are suggesting activities that are possible at home that might include simple experiments using common household projects, things like cooking and measuring, or getting outside for a little bit of moderate physical exercise. Here you can see our preliminary thinking about the number of hours per week that these activities could include. And remember, we're talking about a mix of both digital and analog activities. So, we're right now contemplating about four to six hours per week of work for PK and TK for our youngest students, three and four years old. It's about 10 hours a week for students in kindergarten, first grade, 12 to 15 for second and third grade, and then up to 15 hours per week of independent work in grades four and five. At the secondary level, of course, this starts to look a little bit different. Our distance learning teacher leaders will be curating content in four subject areas, particularly those core academic areas. We also hope then that they will be able to supplement those materials and create some assignments for courses like world languages, physical education and the arts. We don't want to leave out our elective classes. Folks should expect though, that we'll have to get better at this work as we go along. This is the first time as a district, we're attempting to curate curriculum on a week-by-week basis for every teacher in the district. And then finally, we'd like these teams as well to be creating project suggestions that can be completed individual or with other students through an online medium. At the secondary level, we're imagining approximately three to four hours per class per week. So, for a student who's carrying six classes, you could imagine that's something like 18 to 24 hours of independent work per week. We set that there, thinking that most of this work will be somewhat independent. And for the average learner, this may feel a lot like homework. And so, to have more than three or four hours of independent work per day may feel taxing to a young person. I'll then move on to the second element of the distance learning plan, and that is the role of the teacher. So, I just described having a central set of distance learning teacher leaders curating curriculum. Those teams will be sending out these distance learning activity sets each week to teachers across the district. So, this is in response directly to feedback we got from teachers that not every individual is in a position to digitize a week's worth of learning experiences for students. So, teachers will get these, these packets, these electronic packets, and then turn them around to their classes of students. Teachers have the option of using both Google Classroom and for folks who need to learn Google Classroom can begin sending out these materials by email to the families that they're serving. Teachers then are encouraged to supplement the weekly package that they're getting from the district. And so, we're imagining that they may do in a number of ways that are already consistent with what teachers do currently. And that includes supplemental recommendations for reading, writing or projects. The teacher may decide to record some videos or screencasts with tips or suggestions. Teacher can provide feedback, may livestream whole class meetings or lessons. Many teachers are trying that now. May try some facilitated approaches to virtual, to encouraging virtual student interaction. And then it's at this level that we imagine teachers being able to take these packets and make modifications for students who are enrolled in the TWI programs at both Silvia Mendez and Longfellow. The third element of the distance learning plan then consists of direct interactions between teachers and their classes of students. We're conceiving of this right now as office hours, quote, unquote. The reason we are calling it office hours is that there's just simply so much variation across our grades, schools and courses, that by determining this office hours, we're leaving lots of latitude to define the kind of interaction that can take place between the, the individual educator and their students. So, we imagine that this will be scheduled by the teacher in consultation with his or her class. And then included in the office hours may be individual check-in time, maybe class meetings, maybe questions from multiple, from small groups of students and any other guidance that the teachers feel is necessary to be able to support learning from home during this time. I'm sorry, that says duplicative. So, what I'll do now is talk a little bit about the supplemental distance learning supports. So, what we want is that all students across the district get this base level of support from the district and the teachers. And then we imagine that the teams of teachers who are specific to the support of a variety of student groups will be supplementing in addition to what teachers are offering. So, for English language development, all of our schools have English language development teachers. We'll expect those teachers to maintain their current caseload. And on top of all of the things that ELS will be getting in the components that I previously mentioned, we're also anticipating that EL teachers, or sorry, ELD teachers will be able to continue English language development for students in supplementary ways. We'll leave it largely to those ELD teachers to craft what that should look like, but we imagine that this is on top of the base level support that they're receiving from classroom teachers. With respect to special education, the written plan is actually far more detailed than the slides. There's just so much information about the particular individual employees in special ed that we didn't dare try to explain at all this evening. So, similar to ELD teachers, special education teachers will attempt to provide supplemental services to students on their caseload. This is above and beyond the base level instruction that they're receiving through the district learning packets and through their own teachers. We also encourage our special education teachers to be thinking about the goals that are inscribed in each one of the individual education plans of the students that they are teaching. And then think about modifications, given the technology available to attempt to meet those goals. There is no doubt that this is one of the most complicated aspects of trying to move a brick and mortar educational experience into the ether. To talk a little bit about what we think special education teachers and case managers will be doing, we can see additional support through Google Classroom and in the form of tips and the form of additional assignments or modified assignments. We can envision electronic chats or even hangouts. Emails and phone calls to parents and guardians will support students to access work, live online instruction through Zoom or Google Meet. And then any other instructional strategies adapted from the classroom that a teacher feels are appropriately used in this current setting. We do want to recognize that, given that there's no physical interaction between teachers and students during the shelter-in-place order, for however long that lasts, that this will be a that this will be a facsimile of the support that students receive through special education, and that some of those services simply can't be replicated in an online environment. We imagine our reading intervention teachers, we call them the RTI teachers and our lit coaches, will themselves be responsible for keeping track of their current caseloads. And will also take advantage of digital resources to support student learning. So those can include as well small group assignments through digital platforms like Classroom. And then they may also involve customized playlists for students using resources like Khan Academy or Freckle. Our Fast Track Phonics program also has a number of digital resources that can either be pushed out or scanned and distributed. And then we encourage those folks to learn how to use Zoom appointments for small group instruction as well. Also supplemental to this whole plan is the Office of Family Engagement and Equity. We imagine that the OFE team will be working closely with our school principals to monitor participation in district learning. Essentially, we'll be asking our OFE liaisons to take on a case management approach to be working very directly to understand the data about who is participating and not, and then to coordinate with the school in order to draw in students to the distance learning and try to resolve any problems that might be preventing access for families. The same is basically true about academic and intervention counseling, where we do have counselors. We expect that they will be managing a caseload and particularly coordinating with school principals where we're discovering that there are problems with family or student access to technology or where students' participation in distance learning begins to lag. I should say, to go back quickly to counseling, we've done a fair amount of research to try and investigate the HIPAA compatibility of a number of online platforms so that counseling, actually, individual emotional well-being counseling can take place. We feel that we've got most of these issues resolved, and we'll be providing much more detailed guidance to our counselors about exactly how to do that. We do plan to monitor student participation. The state at this point has not offered us guidance about what type of attendance should be required. They are making very clear that ADA funding, the average daily attendance funding, will be available to all California districts through the full closure period. But they haven't specified what reporting mechanism they're expecting of us. Currently, absent any other guidance, we'll plan to do a number of things, which includes tracking participation in twice-per-week office hours, and then roughly logging students' completion of work as it's assigned by teachers. We'll collect all of this centrally through our Brea department. We are committed to ongoing feedback, both from educators and from families. In the same way that we were able to use data from the large-scale teacher survey that we collected, we plan to do that once we launch this plan on April 6. And then we're committed as well to maintaining all of our current channels of communication with families. And we'll also create a survey instrument to try and gauge how successful we're being after a week of implementation. We are struggling in the lack of guidance from the state about how to handle grading and for credit assignments and graduation. Whatever decision we make ultimately as a district, we hope will conform to decisions made by the California Department of Education and ultimately by our institutes of higher education. What we don't want is that any Berkeley student would be penalized for decisions we make locally that could jeopardize their chances at attending college after high school. What we have done so far is extended the third quarter grading period. The old date was the 27th of March. The new date is the 10th of April. This gives, we feel, a fair and more expansive window for students to submit late work. And also accounts for the fact that we've been closed for a while and simply haven't been able to finish our grading. For quarter four, we're taking cues potentially from UC Berkeley. They've decided to move the entire university over to a pass-no-pass grading scheme through the rest of their semester. If we did that, then we would have a little bit of math work to do to figure out how to blend third-quarter letter grades into a pass-no-pass system. And then we're really wrestling with the equity issues associated with potentially assigning a no-pass grade to students who might legitimately have that access issues through the period of the school closures. In terms of graduation, we are still waiting for guidance from the state. Our commitment, our moral commitment is that no student will be penalized for all of these, for the incidents that are taking place now around the country. So we have not yet issued from guidance to our schools about what graduation will look like, but continue to wait for the state of California to say something about graduation requirements for all seniors across the entire state. We are planning professional development for teachers. We recognize that this is one of the larger lifts in trying to move a traditional school institution into the internet. So we've got right now plans for four different professional development mechanisms to support our teachers. They include the creation of an overview webinar that we'll ask all of our teachers to take. This is just the sort of best practices as it relates to distance learning and then talks a little bit about issues like confidentiality appropriateness, monitoring student participation. We're also assembling a list of resources about technology platforms for our educators. There's a rich standing set of online professional development webinars that our teachers can begin to take right away. Those include decent tutorials about Google Classroom, Google Meet, how to use Zoom. So even independent of being in touch with us, we encourage our teachers to begin to explore these resources and these platforms. Our Digitech team will also be creating technology office hours for teachers to be able to call in and pick up pointers. And then for folks who really need the added one-to-one support, we'll also commit to providing technology coaching from our Digitech team. That team is currently five TSAs, so it's certainly outnumbered by the sheer number of educators. And we definitely encourage educators to call colleagues who are tech savvy and begin to pick up these skills themselves. As I finish this up, I would like to reiterate to the Berkeley community and to the Board of Education that we're committed to getting feedback on this plan and to getting better. Nobody has done this before. This is absolutely a revolutionary sea change for schools, and we're trying to do it in about five workdays. So we will get better at this, but please, Berkeley community, be patient with us. No doubt, as we try this for the first time, there's going to be lots of wrinkles to iron out, and we'll do that as quickly and conscientiously as we possibly can. We do want to acknowledge that the overall impact on our families and staff of upended lives as a result of the national response to COVID-19. In addition to all the work we have to do, we also have to manage the emotional impact of the outbreak. And then please know that BUSD is going to do absolutely everything we can to support our community through this very difficult period of time. So thank you very much. That is the end of the presentation, and I'm looking forward to taking questions from board members.
Director.
President.
President.
No, I know, I couldn't, I couldn't, sorry.
Can you tell us how you would like to move through this?
So what I'd like to do is ask people, oh my goodness. Ask people to not, excuse me, put questions in the question and answer function, please, because you'll have a chance for extended comment at the end. Although I'm assuming that Superintendent Stevens also has access to that Q and A and can answer those if he sees fit. Or I'm hoping someone wants to them. And the, since people have sent them in. And then as far as board members' participation, what I'd like to do is do the same thing that I asked of the participants. If you can. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to close this. If you can, it would be great if you can just raise your hand. I see me, I'm going to take me off. And then I have Vice President Alper and Director Sinai. And so then if other people.
Just remind me, where's the hand raising?
Oh, is it the, so at the, so if you click on the participants, it says Participants 167. If you click on that and then go to the panelists, the panelists are all of the people who are on the board here. And and then if you raise your hand, I can see it. So if you raise your hand right now, see there's a raise hand button at the bottom? Oh, that, you did it. Okay, so that's how we're going to do this, and we'll see how it goes. I mean, you know. Okay, so Vice President Ty Alper.
Thanks. And President Appel, I imagine a number of us have a number of questions. Do you want us to sort of ask one and then go to another board member?
Why don't we do that? And if you still have a question, you can keep your hand up.
Okay. So thanks, Dr. Stevens. Where is he? Oh, there he is. Thank you for that, and to all the people who have put in so much work into that. When Director Sinai said earlier that it's been a week and a half, I thought, well, I literally thought that that must be wrong. And I looked at my calendar and realized that it's not. So given all the legal challenges, technology, practical challenges involved in putting together a plan that we weren't expecting to have to do so quickly is really sort of a momentous accomplishment. Can we ask you to share a slide? Dr. Stevens, can you go back to the one that talks about the hours? That each of these activity. Share your screen until you figure it out.
Go ahead, Director Alper.
Well, okay, so my question is, so, you know, one thing that I know so many families in our community have experienced over the last week and a half, which has given them, I think, a great appreciation for what our teachers and and classified staff do every day is they found themselves trying to homeschool their kids without any training and with limited, with the limited, helpful but so limited resources that the district was able to put together. And I think one question that I'm not totally clear on, even if the details aren't set yet, but what the vision is for at each grade level or elementary and then middle school and high school. When you talk, how many, I think families want to know, how many hours out of the day is someone else going to be teaching my kid? And how many hours am I responsible for doing that with whatever resources you're going to give me? And it seems like there's two 90-minute office hours, so that's three hours a week of office hours. So that seems like three hours a week. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a question. Am I right? The three hours a week, K-12, the expectation is that your kid will be in front of a computer with a live teacher doing some kind of synchronous learning or educational or some kind of experience. And then on top of that, there are, what I didn't know was what you meant by lessons. Are the lessons synchronous video lessons with a teacher, or are they, you know, pre-recorded videos? Or are they written materials? And is that, and I assume that's on top of the three hours a day? So in general, I guess that's kind of my question.
You're describing it correctly. So the sort of live interpersonal interaction between teachers and families is contemplated as those two 90-hour office hours. Now, obviously, many educators will exceed that, but we're thinking about this as the baseline across all of our classrooms. And then on top of that, there would be interaction between teachers and families as teachers are sending out these assignments, interactions taking place through Google Classroom, the students are looking to make sense of those things. For students who are receiving supplemental services like English language learners, students with disabilities, there would also be supplemental interaction on top of those things. And then many of the activity sets, we contemplate also including not synchronous videos, but videos that teachers will, that these centralized teacher teams will record that could include tips and lessons that can be watched not in a synchronous environment. This would be asynchronous, essentially static videos. And then tips for students to also be able to work independently through a variety of online resources. So these things are all cumulative. And I hope I'm answering the question. It obviously will depend a great deal depending on the age of the student. But we imagine that all of these will add up, not to a complete six-hour school day. We realize that that is simply beyond our means to provide. But conceivably, many hours per day of work that students will be doing either independently or with guidance of the teacher.
Okay. Thank you. Your.
You're muted, President Appel. Sorry, I'm going to go ahead and ask Director Sinai to go ahead and ask one of your probably several questions.
I have three questions, but I'll just ask one. So, and this is kind of combined, just Dr. Stevens, we do a lot of behavioral health through Zoom, and Zoom is HIPAA compliant. So that has been an extremely positive tool. My question is around special ed and the issues around the case management. And the slide that was presented or in your presentation earlier around the percentage of teachers and/or staff who are also out due to their own personal childcare needs. And with the, you know, we're all preparing for a potential surge. Wondering what maybe the immediate impact is on caseload in special ed? And if we're looking in preparation for you, I think in, I saw somewhere, you know, the large percentage of teachers and staff that might be out as the weeks proceed. What some of the thoughts have been around that?
So we're not yet to the point of understanding sort of on an educator-by educator basis, the impact on case management of our teachers' current family situations. No doubt, it's the case that some of our special educators as well have limited capacity during the day. We did, though, however, in sort of crafting this plan, try to account for some of those limitations and think we've settled upon some reasonable expectations, both for special educators and general educators. We are quite worried about the fact that most folks, most health experts are predicting that something like 50 to 60% of us will get COVID-19, will very likely become sick from it, and not be able to work even remotely. We don't have substitute teachers in this particular setting, not any ways that we could be able to step in and play the role in the same way that a classroom teacher would be able to. So we've got a lot of thinking to do about that. Right now, we're begging for patience. And it may be the case that we begin to experience these impacts, the impact of illness and its effect on the services that we can provide. I suspect there's actually many sectors of the society that are going to be impacted by ill workforce.
Great. So now I am going to call on Director Leva Cutler.
Thank you. Thank you for the detail. A lot of this, and it's a lot of information. And this is suggestion, there's some terms that you're using that, and I don't even, I don't know, like synchronized video, static video. I sort of think I know, but it's, I think, for families, it would help to know what my child is learning and how, what's the learning vehicle that they are experiencing. So it's sort of, my question is sort of piggybacking, I think, on Julie's in terms of access of the students, both in the elementary and mostly in the elementary, I think. In terms of how, what does a day look like for a student who's in the elementary? And what could a parent expect their child to be experiencing, to having a little bit more of an outline of a look of what it could look like. It could be Plan A, B, and C, but it should look like this for your child as an elementary student. So I wonder if that's something that would be created for families to have. And then I'm going to squeeze in another question. An organizational chart for each school in terms of who's doing what, so a parent would know and who to go to. Because it's a new world now for families. And so who do I go to if my child's not sitting down in front of the computer? And I don't know what their schedule is. My kid knows, but she will tell me. So how do we make sure that that kind of communication happens, that parents know and have some idea? Especially because this is the first time for some parents that were actually sitting and helping our child with learning a computer, and they're learning it together sometimes. Sometimes their student knows more than the parent, of course.
My experience, that's almost always the case. That's true in my house, at least. So your first question is just some of the terms that I'm using. So this idea of synchronous learning, essentially, we're engaged right now in a synchronous video conference. We're able to talk to one another, respond to each other in real time. And so we have. And so we have built that into the plan. These office hours are conceived of as the opportunity to work synchronously. Teachers and students together. We also though know that teachers can't be available for six hours, nor can students tolerate six hours per day of looking into a computer screen. And so when I talk about videos that are asynchronous, these are videos that would be recorded either by the teacher leader teams. And made available as links on a drive. Essentially, a student could be in Google Classroom, click on a link and pull up a lesson. That might have been recorded by a teacher working centrally and then teachers, I suspect, are going to begin to record their own videos so that they can be viewed. When they're convenient for, for students, but, but not sort of only exist as a single point in time. So I imagine that there will be sort of multiple mediums going on. Again, there's, we've got a training gap here. Lots of teachers will need to learn how to do these things. I also imagine a bit to that earlier point that as teachers record. More and more videos as they make more digitized content, that sharing between teachers on teams, even sharing across schools. Is just going to be far more common. And so one of the things we haven't thought about yet, but that stands as an opportunity is how to capture a lot of the independent. Digital work that teachers are creating and make sure that we're cataloging it and creating additional resource banks for teachers to be able to access. Smart ideas coming from colleagues, even in other schools. So those are, and then maybe you could remind me of a couple of the other questions, the daily schedule. So Director Alper was asking about the, the office hours. So families should think that there's going to be, you know, at least two opportunities per week. To be plugged in with the teacher very directly. Google Classroom, as we get it up and running, will also be an additional opportunity for families and students to plug in with teachers. This won't be in a video format, but will feel more like a chat that we're all used to online. And then the, the amount of work going on again will depend by grade level. We're roughly thinking that it's in the hour to 90 minute. Range per day for students who are quite young, five, six years old. But then we also wanted to include a number of. Sort of suggestions for at-home activities, outside activities. Families of young students should certainly expect that active parenting will continue to be required. Just like the teachers of young students know that active teaching is required in the classroom. Students are just capable of less independent work when they're younger.
Active parenting, then Stevens, we're requiring that of our parents?
No comment, no comment.
Okay, so.
I would hate for a parent to be right now under the misapprehension that a young student would be seated at a computer for hours per day. That's not the vision.
I was just joking. Director Brown?
Yes, thank you Superintendent Stevens for. Your presentation and for all of your hard work on this. I was wondering, well, I have a couple of questions, but I was wondering if you could go back to the graduation slide. Or I guess I can just pull it up on my.
I think I can do that. Give me just one moment.
Perfect. Okay, so I know that we're waiting. For, for the state for some guidance around graduation. But in addition to that, I'm also concerned about AP testing for our students. SAT testing and things of that nature. What messaging are we going to start sending out to families? In regards to those super important tests, especially the AP test that we. So what messaging are we going to send out to, to parents who are extremely worried about those, those stakes tests?
And I appreciate the question. So we do know right now that the state of California has applied to the federal government for a waiver for all state tests. So that's the large CASP exam. That's all of what's called the LPAC, the English Language Learners. The College Board has actually already begun to communicate to school communities about how they will approach AP testing for the semester. So they're at work right now on a bank of accessible online tutoring videos. To try and make up for lost instruction for students who are taking AP courses. And they're also advertising that they think they will be able to create a test from home. Version of the AP test that students will, will be able to take using their own computers and from home. So they seem to be innovating at this moment. They're communicating quite actively and as we get more information from the College Board about AP tests. We'll turn those around. IB is also another larger national organization that's doing thinking on behalf of all schools. Approach the current challenge. So more information to come about those tests, but those companies seem to be well on their way to resolving some issues.
Thank you.
So I am going to call myself next and then I'm going to go back around to Ty. I have a question, Dr. Stevens, about. Like the role of the school communities in helping students kind of start learning in this totally new way. You know, a lot of times, like every student, every school, kind of every elementary school and middle school, they kind of have their own. Kind of personality and they know the families really well and they kind of, the teachers tend to know their, their students' families. And so I'm wondering if we've built in any way that, that school community can be, how they're going to be kind of a part of this. Plan.
Yeah, I really appreciate the question. This has been, I think, one of the, the single most frustrating aspects of. This particular combination of challenges we're dealing with. We've had no shortage of. Offers of volunteer, for volunteers, folks who want to serve meals, who are offering to help with technology distribution. Who are simply interested in supporting families. Because of the shelter in place requirements, because of social distancing. We found a number of good-hearted volunteer efforts have simply been denied by local health officials. Just because they would expose folks to additional risk to infection. So we're trying to figure out how to capture. Community spirit and volunteers while also maintaining social distancing and essentially the quarantines that we're all living under. We've had some good luck and Berkeley Public Schools Fund is really showing us how to do that. And then we've had some efforts that have been stymied so far. And we're trying to work out how to resolve them.
I guess, I mean, thank you. That's helpful. I, I think, I mean, well, I know what I mean, but it's, you know, each like. I don't know, the, especially with the elementary schools, you know. I'm a little confused how, I mean, the, the teachers in that school and the principal will really know, like which students are likely to need. You know, computers and internet access and, you know, if a parent, if a family doesn't have those things. They're not going to see the email asking for people to sign up for them. So I'm just kind of wondering what the, if you have talked about any plans of how. Either the family engagement office or the principals or somebody, maybe some aides, I don't know, can, can contact the families who. Who are not, are most likely not like reading the district emails.
I understand your question. It's a good one. What, what we're trying to do is. Use as many of the existing and effective structures in the school district as we possibly can. So you're absolutely right. Principals will still be principals. All of our ancillary support staff is still there to help. So folks like counselors, OFI family liaisons, we want them doing all of this direct outreach to families. And we want families to reach out to them. Ultimately, it will be the principal's job to coordinate the distance learning plan for their school. And to resolve all of the problems inside of their school community in the same way that they do it now. We're stepping up as a district to offer a lot of support around the, the creation of digital learning content. That's the big role that we're going to play, but there's just no substitute for, for that communication that can take place between folks who know each other. Even if it has to be, you know, through Zoom.
And I'm going to actually jump in with another part of that question, which is I, I have been contacted by some people who. Wants to donate either Chromebooks or money. And so if you can put a pitch in for where, how those people. Should engage.
Yeah, we appreciate that. So Berkeley Public Schools Fund right now has really stepped up and is occupying the sort of the leadership space for volunteerism. Really remarkable statistic that all of Berkeley should be proud of. In the first six days of. The school closure period, Berkeley Public Schools Fund raised $100,000 from the community. That can be then applied directly to families in some form of need. So I would encourage folks who want to be involved to just check out Berkeley Public Schools Fund's website. They've got lots of great details about how to get involved in volunteer efforts during the school closure period.
Great, thank you Superintendent Stevens. And if, you know, if you have a hard time finding the site, make, you know, you, you can feel free to. To email me or I'm sure any of the other board members, except maybe. Well, you can email me. I won't speak for the other board members. Okay, so I am going to go back around and call on Vice President Alper.
Thanks, President Alper. I'm gonna. I'm gonna squeeze in one quick question, then, then they come. The question is about. The status of free Wi-Fi in the city and whether you can talk about access, not only to the computers, but to Wi-Fi and how we can help families with that. Or if you know about efforts that the city is making on that front. And then. I, I appreciated Director President Alper's question about sort of the community and it's kind of goes maybe also back to Director Labor Cutler's question about. The, all the questions that families are going to have and who, who to, who they go to. With those questions and the, I know that the Zoom has this Q and A function that. Probably we should disable next time because we're not, it's, this isn't a town hall and it's not a way for us to meaningfully respond to questions. But there are a lot of good questions in there that people have. And as this gets rolled out the Monday after spring break. The questions that families have are just going to exponentially increase. There'll be all kinds of questions. Technological questions, but also questions about how to, how to do their own teaching, how to access the materials and. Some of the logistics. And so to me, it seems like principals really do have a big role in that. So I was glad to hear what you said about that, Dr. Stevens. So it seems to me that principals should be. Communicating, you know, if not daily, you know, very frequently with their families. As we roll this out and making themselves available to answer questions. And perhaps, and then, and I don't know if it's, there should be some forum for these questions to get answered. Maybe, maybe that's the answer is the principals. Or is it some kind of district town hall where people can actually, you know, go on Zoom and ask questions? What are, what are you thinking about in terms of how we help families navigate all this?
Yeah, probably it's an all of the above approach, Director Alper. The communication challenge that we're facing is simply enormous. There's barely a district practice right now that doesn't have to be rethought. And it is quite literally that almost nothing is working with the key exception of our relationships. And I think that that's really the, the sort of place to build a plan. We do have to work with our principals to make sure that they understand the plan. That I've just described, that they provided feedback on it, but yet haven't yet themselves had a chance to really interrogate it. And then teachers as well will also need that opportunity. We're going to do that as quickly as we can. But for folks who are viewing this particular discussion tonight, you're now ahead of the curve. You're well ahead of our staff in terms of what you know. We do imagine that we'll have to do things like live district-wide town halls. We've probably got a lot of Q and As. I wouldn't be surprised if we have to revise sections of the plan on the basis of the way it really works. And then probably having to flesh out sections of the plan with additional guidance to answer questions right now that we just can't conceive of. Because we haven't done this before.
That's great. Thank you. And the free Wi-Fi?
Yeah, thanks. Jay Nitschke, our Director of Instructional Technology, has been far more involved in this. So I can speak generally about it. There have been a number of companies that have come forward during the school closure crisis, offering free Wi-Fi. Some of them are indefinite. Some of them, I think, are for a month or two at a time. All of them do require that potential customers go through. The typical scheduling and installation steps, as I understand it. I understand that there have been some discussions at the city level about trying to install hotspots. And there, there, I think we still got a number of families and even some staff who just are lacking access and we've got to help them resolve that. Jay Nitschke, I don't know if you're listening to my response and if you could either modify it or add anything to it.
Hi, it's Natasha Bieri, actually just jumping in because I was involved with some of the offers from local internet providers. We, Sonic, which is a local business, offered free internet for all families that have K-12 or college. Students and also for seniors and Comcast has been offering limited time free for low income families.
Thank you, Ms. Bieri. I am now going to move to, just going to go down the list, to Director Sinai. Did you have an additional question?
I do. I'm happy to defer and come back to my question so that Student Director Hemp can ask one, because I think she popped up, but didn't get in the first round.
Thank you. I didn't see her. Director Hemp?
Yeah, actually, most of my questions were answered in the past few minutes. So you can come back to me as well and continue with the other comments and questions from the board members. But thank you so much, Dr. Stevens, for putting this all together and answering all these questions as well. And yeah, thank you.
I do want to do a little time check and let you guys know that we have about five more minutes until we reach the 90 minute. Time that was put on this item. I do think it's really important, so maybe we should spend a little more time, but. People should just be aware of that. And I do want people to know who have put a, a question in a Q and A. Function of Zoom, you know, we usually do not take, I mean, we never, we don't have public comment during the meeting. So, you know, some of your questions have been asked by some of us. Excuse me, but I do want to say that I'm, I'm assuming that we will have some way. To respond to the questions in the Q and A. And what do you think, Dr. Stevens? Can we put that on the website? Or like, I don't know if we have people's emails who, who signed in tonight, because we could also just send them to the people.
In some cases, we do. We've got staff reviewing the questions and while we can't provide written answers over the course of tonight's conversation. We are keeping track of them and they're very helpful to us. We, like I said, I do imagine that we're going to have a number of Q and A documents that we'll have to put forward. Just to flesh out some of the details that are included in the plan.
Okay, so that's just to say that we're not going to answer your questions during this call, but they, they are being. Taken into account by the administration and will be answered. At some point. Okay, so now I'm going to go to Director Leva Cutler. Oh, I'm sorry, Director Sinai, you didn't get to ask a question.
She says she would wait.
For Director Hemp.
And for Director Hemp.
You, Beatrice.
Thank you. You know, I, I think I just want to reiterate, I think what Director Brown was asking, I, I. I'm very concerned about our, well, I'm concerned about all our students, but I'm also very concerned about our juniors, because the junior year is such an important year. With all the various exams. And so I think in addition to monitoring and dogging the College Board and the state. I hope we can find a few minutes to also do some advocacy on behalf of our students and families. To, you know, the, the one unique aspect of the pandemic is the whole country is in it together. So we're not at a disadvantage over cities all across this country. So, you know, whether it's the school board associations. Or the superintendent associations, we have to really support our students. And make sure that these private testing organizations that play such a huge role in. Influencing student acceptance, get pressure from us that they have to lighten up on this. And all the college system have to really kind of look at their acceptance. So I encourage us to do advocacy around that. My specific question really, it, and I, I don't know if you answered it with Director or Vice President Alper, but. You talked a lot about the teachers. And we haven't talked very much about the classified staff and we haven't talked very much about UBA or the Principals Association. And kind of where they're fitting in the work that we're carrying out this timeframe.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So to talk a bit about principals, you know, in the early days of last week, even before we understood from Governor Newsom. That the, this school closure period would be extensive. Our principals were like our teachers sort of waiting for additional guidance. And I think it's fair to say that across the system, everybody was waiting to see what was going to happen. Things really began to. Things really began to shift Wednesday and Thursday of last week, as we heard Governor Newsom talk, as the CDE began to issue guidance about distance learning. State Superintendent Tony Thurmond began to speak about the importance of distance learning. And it was really at that point that we began to mobilize. We got the survey out, we began to engage our teachers. And that's when the principal engagement began as well about midway through last week, as we realized the sea change about to occur. I myself am having a regular every other day phone check-ins with UBA President Janet Levinson. Our principals are on daily Zoom calls, have been able to see this plan, offer commentary on the plan. That's true, PK all the way up to high school. Separately, Bajat Tiar, the Associate Superintendent of Ed Services, is in conversations with Tom Reed, who is the principal at Berkeley Adult School. You'll notice they were not included this evening, but we haven't left them out. We hope as well to be able to restore some version of adult school services, particularly to folks who are pursuing their high school equivalency through BAS. So our principals and our administrators have been deeply involved, and as you've heard me describe, they'll play key roles in trying to hold this plan together. They're the folks who are going to stand in every gap they find and try to pull together using their best judgment, a plan that will actually work for all of us. For our classified folks, they're playing a variety of roles right now. Some, as we've described before, right out there on the front lines, and particularly our nutrition service workers have been out there preparing meals and serving them every single day. Custodians have not yet come into schools, although today, as we opened up schools temporarily for teachers, many of them came back out. They will, however, get busy cleaning schools. We've just been a little uncertain about the length of the school closure. And then we do also have a number of groups of employees in the classified ranks who have not come back to work yet. So we're trying to do some thinking about the role of instructional assistance in this online environment. So we want to engage their union and thoughtful members among them to begin to think about how they can support special education services remotely. But again, we're just peeling back a layer at a time, what feels like the largest onion we've ever seen.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Stevens. And I will say that I got my timing wrong, and you still have another half, we still have another half an hour on this item. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn to Director Lava Cutler for your next question.
Thank you. I think we're all answering, really asking really good questions, and the Q and A also has really good questions. You spoke about Director Superintendent Stevens about possibly having town halls meetings, and I think that that would be a great idea to hold, perhaps, especially for special ed. There's a lot of questions that parents have. How do we do this? How do we do this? Especially for our students who don't have the capacity to be in front of a computer, and their needs are different. And so how do we address that? So I think that that might be a good opportunity to be able to answer a lot of the questions that families and even teachers may be having in our specialized staff. Do you know if, I mean, this is, nobody's even spoken about it, but in terms of the leeway that districts will have regarding our LCAP plans and monies and how they're being spent? Because obviously, everything is different. And in terms of how we can use, making sure that our students, our special population of students are getting served under the LCAP with this new format that we're teaching our students, and what that might look like. Obviously, this is something that's going to be rolling out, but will districts have that flexibility to readdress some of the things that we have on our LCAP to address distant learning, which might include, you know, headphones for some students who don't have access to, you know, we have a lot of people in the room, in the house, things like that. So in terms of the LCAP and also our BISA funding, that's going to change too, in terms of the arts. Students obviously don't have music, but what will happen to that? So there's a lot of little things that need, will, once sure. I'm hoping that the the Department of Education will give districts more flexibility in terms of meeting our students' needs with what funds we do have access to and availability to. And, you know, because I'm particularly concerned about our BTEC students, our independent study students, what happens to CTE, you know, there's so many questions in terms of what happens to these programs during this interim.
Lots of questions. I wish I had all of those answers. I would be sleeping more easily if I did. We do know that there's efforts taking place right now, advocacy at the state level by organizations like the ACTS, the Association of California School Administrators, to create some latitude for districts about timelines. So for example, the submission of the LCAP plan, which is typically due in June, may be extended. We don't know that for certain, but there's advocacy taking place just to lighten the workload for districts, given the enormity of the new work that we're trying to accomplish. In terms of budget flexibility, we haven't heard anything from the state. We're not right now concerned about sort of how we're paying for things. We're just committed to paying for them. We are keeping tracks of sort of added expenditures and potential savings, and we'll obviously have a lot of accounting to do. In the next presentation, we'll talk a little bit about trying to bring some initial estimates of those costs and potential savings to the board meeting on April 15th, so that board members can be apprised of the financial impact of COVID-19 on the district.
Thank you, Superintendent Stevens. Director Brown?
Hey, again, thanks. I wanted to ask some follow-up questions to instruction, if that's okay. We've been receiving, since we've been on here, a couple, I'm sure, emails from people, other folks have been receiving, but also in the chat. Will there be flexibility? So I have two questions. One, will there be flexibility around around office hour, around dividing office hour time? So if teachers are providing 90 minutes of office hours, can that be broken up by days? And then the other question I had about was about the grading system. So I saw that we were potentially moving to pass, no pass, or there was a thought about maybe moving to the pass, no pass. I know that another good practice that some other districts are doing is is moving, instead of a quarter system, moving to a semester system. Do we see that that may be a good practice in Berkeley, or what are your?
Yeah, so those are two really good questions. Remind me of the first, though, because I'm starting to get tired, Director.
I'm sorry. The first question was about flexibility for office hours.
Yeah, yeah. You know, at that level of specificity, we haven't yet thought about it. My own personal approach is this. What we're trying to do through this plan is create a foundational experience for all of our students. We recognize that lots of teachers have gone above and beyond. Lots of teachers are trying their best, and some, for a variety of reasons, haven't yet been able to start. This plan represents sort of the foundation, the baseline, so to speak, that teachers and families should count on. What I don't propose to do is sort of centrally dictate how every teacher in the district should implement this plan. I would far rather have teachers approach the plan flexibly, think about how to make the plan work for them. And then what I don't want to do is turn off innovation or creativity, or teachers who, for a variety of reasons, just want to put in the time to support their students. And so I would say, yes, the answer should be, let's think flexibly about how teachers implement this plan in service of kids. That's how great ideas are born. And then the second question, sorry, I'd need that reminder again.
The second question was about the grading policy, the pass, pass, or potentially moving from a quarter system to a semester system?
Yeah, it's really the semester two grade that counts that's reflected on transcripts. So this quarter three grade that we, you know, the time period that we're extending to permit the submission of late work isn't going to show up on students' transcripts anyways. So we're really a pretty semester-dominated school district. What we're struggling with, of course, is that under these circumstances, it feels somewhat unfair to grade students on assignments when we understand there are all kinds of access issues that are limiting students' ability to participate. And the same is true for staff members who have an awful lot of new things to learn. That's the sort of center of our dilemma. Even if we went to pass, no pass, we've got to ask ourselves, how comfortable do we feel not passing a student under these circumstances? And then how would we calculate a semester grade so that no student is negatively impacted as they apply to a college, let's say? So I would far rather do what everybody else is doing and just stick to whatever guidance we get from the state about grading, rather than trying to make up our own response. And so we're just, we're in a bit of a waiting game on grading right now, and we hope to get more word soon.
Thanks. I did want to say, as the president, because this has come up now a couple of times, I think Julie also talked about advocating to the universities, and it's something that I'm happy to look at, but I think we should wait to hear, because, you know, this is like somebody just said, I think that was you, Director Brown. You know, all of the students all over the country are facing this same obstacle, and so they have to figure out how they're going to address it in a fair way. And so I would be happy to advocate for that, and you know, Vice President Alper is very helpful because he works at Cal. But I will follow up with Dr. Stevens after this meeting to figure out, like, how, you know, Julie, to figure out how we can advocate. Because I don't, I think, I honestly, what I'm coming to believe now is that in some ways, we are thinking so much more deeply than many districts are, that I think we can play a positive role in that, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it. We do hear rumors that the California Department of Education will issue some guidance on Friday, so we'll see if that's true.
That's great. Okay, I'm gonna, Director Hemp, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just, now may be a good time to voice. I'm just worried that if like, if we were to allow the grades up until this point of semester to be the standing grades for students moving forward, I can see there being problems with the fact that not everyone can do that whole, like, makeup work thing a lot of teams are offering right now, and it kind of creates an inequity, because some students could have gone into the fourth quarter thinking that they could pull up their grades, and now they can't, and they're not, and not everyone, you know, like, has the chances to communicate with their teachers and do that late work.
I agree with you. There's just sort of inherently problems in the situation that we're in. We're just, we just don't have a great solution right now.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. I just think it's still important to point out.
Thank you, Director Hemp. I'm gonna ask a question that I actually got from the Q and A, because it's about something that hasn't been discussed. And that is, for people who are just, who are, for people who are tuning in, who are, need to register their kids for kindergarten next year, or maybe they've moved here and they need to register their kids for, you know, a later grade. I guess there was till May, till something like May 13th to hand in the registration information. So there's a question about, like, how they can get information about how to register their kids for school next year, and like, some of the things that are required, like a dental appointment or other doctor's appointments, they can't actually get done because they can't go see their dentist. So I am wondering if the school, if the district has had any chance to evaluate and maybe make some tweaks to the registration system so that it can work for people during this time of quarantine.
It's an excellent question. I admit I have not, in the last week, began to think about this myself. What I will do is check in with our Director of Enrollment, Francisco Martinez. I don't doubt that he's already thinking about these kinds of modifications and trying to make the enrollment process both accessible and fair, given the circumstances. What I do encourage folks to do, if you've got any questions about enrollment, is to reach out to Francisco Martinez directly by email. He is our Director of Enrollment. I think that you'll find him responsive, but he's the right person to talk to, and his name is easily accessible on our website as well.
Okay, that's great. I'm gonna ask you, Brent, or Doctor Superintendent Stevens, if you have the energy for another round of questions, or if we should just move on. I mean,
I appreciate you asking me that. I obviously am here to serve the board, so it's really your decision.
Okay, well, I'm gonna take that, and just ask my colleagues to just keep that in mind when you're asking the questions. And remember that if there's any questions that we have, we can also have them answered at another time. And if there's anything that we think should be public, we can ask that they be in a communication. That being said, I'm gonna go around one more time and start with Vice President Alper.
I'm good.
Great. Next, I'm gonna go to Director Sinai.
So a couple of quick things. One, this could be a great opportunity to move as much of the student enrollment process online, you know, getting whatever applications we can. We've got some time to think about how to do that. I want to just go back to the grading and just remind folks, I really support us being very cautious about any any grading policy, honestly, because again, you know, maybe it comes from where I'm on a day-to-day basis, but there is going to be a surge of infections, which means kids don't get hit by it as hard. And hopefully that will continue, but parents are going to be hit and grandparents are going to be hit. So people's level of attentiveness to their online education over the course of the next week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, is potentially also going to be impacted. So we don't want people's grades impacted by the fact that the family got sick, or the family had to self-quarantine and be in a different circumstance. So it's really a moving target. And I think the more flexibility with as much resource as possible without holding the grading policy, I think that it could potentially become a real challenge.
Superintendent Stevens, and I also actually wonder if Associate Superintendent Tiara might also want to chime in here.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in, and then Bajat Tiar is welcome to as well. We do recognize, we're under really extraordinary circumstances right now. You know, in the opening days of what appeared to be the outbreak, we were able to come to agreement very quickly with our four bargaining units, making adjustments to extended medical leave. What we were finding is just that a large number of employees were either required to self-quarantine because of potential exposure or choosing to self-quarantine because of a loved one in a high-risk category. Rather than have people go without pay, we modified our extended medical leave policy so that they would not be penalized financially for making those decisions. We did that because we thought it was the right thing to do. Whatever we do with student attendance moving forward, we want to make sure we're doing the right thing. And that is providing latitude for students and families, given these exceptional circumstances. We don't have a policy for that yet, but the principle, I think, would be exactly the same, and that is to create flexibility, given what we're about to endure.
So I'm assuming that this is something that will come to the board for, you know, to pass policies when you have a chance to formulate a recommendation?
When and if it seems necessary. You know, we already do have excused medical absences, as an example. And so I don't know that we'll have to create new board policy, so much as just insist on empathy, you know, the fact that a student may disappear from view for a week or two. We don't want them to be penalized unfairly under these circumstances because they or a loved one is getting sick. So we'll keep an eye on the need for revised policy if it turns out to be necessary. But I think the first step is really just sort of encouraging empathy among everybody who's working here in the school district for what families are experiencing.
So empathy, empathy's good. And I think other board members, if you, if things occur to you that you think would be appropriate for, like, an emergency policy in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic, maybe you can communicate that with Superintendent Stevens and myself. Okay, so now I'm gonna ask, I have time for two more questions, so that's Director Lava Cutler, and then we're gonna wrap up with Director Brown.
I think my concern goes back to two things. One is when, if, during this period of time, you mentioned that teachers got ill, as mentioned, and can't participate. and can't participate, that we don't have a substitute pool to support, to replace that teacher. And which means that I don't, you know, would it be 100, in the high school, it'd be 150 students potentially. I don't know how many they would have. But then those students wouldn't have a teacher because they wouldn't have a substitute. So what would be our plan of action and that? And why is it, we've had substitutes before. Why wouldn't we want to train a group in this distance learning to be ready in the event that we have, we have teachers who will be absent?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. Part of, a very deliberate part of the design that we adopted, you know, these central teams of groups creating curriculum had to do with the idea that over time, some educators are going to get sick. Having teams that are developing the content centrally lets us plan for a bit of redundancy. Essentially, that content is still available to students, even if the teacher becomes ill. We can't do that for every possible course in the district. The high school offers hundreds of courses every semester. What we can, and then teachers are, you know, intended to both modify those activity sets and then do their office hours. It may be possible to bring in the sub to do some of that modification of those activity sets or do the office hours. Some of this, remember though, is going to get pretty specific to teachers themselves and what they're doing in their classrooms. And so we just, it might be possible and we'll look at it again. I do think under these circumstances, working digitally, that having substitutes step in and carry on for teachers may be a bit more challenging than under normal circumstances, but we will commit to having a look.
Thank you. Director Brown?
I'm actually okay.
Okay. Does anyone else? Raise your hand if you have another pressing question. Because I think we have, you know, a little bit more time. Director Lava Cutler?
I'm especially concerned about the students who are, before we even had COVID-19, the students who were truant and not coming to school, what that, are they going to be present in virtual distance learning? It would be wonderful to know that this is probably, this might be their platform for learning, I'm hopeful. But if not, who will be monitoring and watching that? In terms of the students that were having this, this chat, these challenges that are coming to school, are they now having that equally the challenge in being present for distant learning?
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, we, all of the same folks who work in the district and who do that work now still work for us, still will continue to do that work. Again, so much of this will be relationship based. Sadly, it's, I think, going to be impacted by the lack of personal contact. You know, all of the research on distance learning suggests so far that equity gaps are actually exacerbated. Under these circumstances, they're not improved. So I do think for some students, the experience of sitting at a computer and attempting to learn is going to be more alienating than going to class and interacting with peers personally, interacting with teachers personally. I share your worries. I think that we're heading into a situation in which some students, I think, who may already be at risk are sort of put at further risk because of what's going on, both, both in our schools and our society. So we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we're doing that outreach, collecting good data to know who's participating and who's not. But I share the worry.
Director Brown?
Thank you, President Appel. I am going to go ahead and ask my question. And this may be something that we haven't really been thinking about, you know, prioritizing the other priorities we have going on. I'm a little nervous about, and I know our students need their Chromebooks and I'm excited about the opportunity to provide those for students who really need them. I think I'm a little nervous about monitoring and making, ensuring that the Chromebooks are used for their intended purposes. I know that some districts have the online system that's a part of G Suite called HAPARA, where we can monitor what students are doing on their, their Chromebooks or forbid them from going to certain websites that aren't educationally provided from the district. And this may be something that we should think about and consider, especially if we're not going to be able to be there with our students while they're working from home.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that question. I do believe that all of our devices are set with those educational controls already intact. I don't know that we'll be able to get an answer this evening from Jay Nitschke, our Director of Instructional Technology. If I'm wrong, I'm sure he'll correct me tomorrow and we'll be sure to get information to the board about what controls we do put on our devices as we're lending them out.
And I wanted to, Associate Superintendent Tiara, I wanted to go back. I forgot to call on you. So if you have any comments to any of the, the information that Superintendent Stevens has presented, either about the grades or actually about any other part of the educational home, 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 whatever, home teaching, home, home lessons, that would be good.
Thank you. So what I want to talk about is just to piggyback on what the superintendent said. It's really important for us to find a protocol in place that we can monitor students who are participating. So we can then, as an equity, as an equity lens, we can continue those relationships and reach out to those families and students who aren't participating. We still have our schools in place, as you said, and schools who have their unique relationships and personalities that we will continue to rely on. We have our Office of Family Engagement. We have our work with Student Support Services as well. I actually did meet with our Manager of Admissions last week to talk about what changes do we need to do to operationalize in our current reality? So consider thinking about what does it look like for the family experience now with regards to enrolling students in admissions? So we have, the priority for this last week and a half has been around the instructional focus of getting our plan up and running and getting our students' resources and our families' resources. And now we can move into some of the day to day operational issues of the district.
Thank you, Associate Superintendent Tiara. And I want to say that we've all kind of recognized that Brent came into this district and had to deal with all of this stuff right away. And I want to say the same thing to you and to Sam and the other people who are all who are doing an excellent job of responding to an unprecedented challenge for, for the district, for any district. Okay. Well, thank you. So I'm going to let that, let, close this item now. And if, I would say, board members, if you have any other questions or other questions come up, you know, please, oh, I'm sorry, what we, did somebody else just talk?
President Appel, this is an action item, isn't it?
Yes, we, we made it an action, oh, to, to, yeah, Superintendent Stevens, I, I was just going to close the discussion.
Oh, okay.
But I think if people have other questions, they should just make, you know, ask, ask Brent when you have time. And, and Dr. Stevens, do you want us to pass this distance learning plan, or did you want to wait?
No, I don't, I, I wasn't quite certain, President Appel, if there would actually be an action item to come out of this. So I don't know that I'm requesting any action from the board this evening. As I'm recalling our discussion, you wanted to leave it as an action in case something did come up that would permit the board to take action. But, but no, I don't, I don't have a request.
That's kind of what I thought. Superintendent Stevens is correct that I asked that it be an action item in case anything came up in the conversation that we decided we wanted to take action on. But they're not asking us to take action on anything. Director, Director?
Will this come back again to us just as an update at the next board meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, we've been together with President Appel contemplating using all of our board meetings to provide the community with updates on COVID-19 and our response.
Director Sinai?
Will the plan be writ, be translated into Spanish, Dr. Stevens?
Yes.
So that families?
Yeah, so it doesn't exist in translated form yet. This is hot off the presses. It's only hours old, but that's the next step.
Okay. And I think you're still, you're still planning on doing some revisions as, you know, as it continues to make its way through all of the many eyes. So I don't think it would be appropriate for us to.
I think a short and sweet kind of what's coming your, coming our way would really help families know in Spanish. It's coming, but the, and this is what it might, might have some just core ingredients of the distance learning.
I think actually keeping all parents updated would be, all families updated would be, I mean, I think the district has been doing a good job of that, but I agree, like a very specific and to the point communication about this. I'm sorry, what were you going to say, Superintendent Stevens?
Yeah, today's communication to families both shared the core elements of the distance learning plan, the seven elements that I went over in tonight's presentation, also shared the news about the six counties, seven counties going out until May 1st. And tomorrow, we'll plan on a quick cover letter along with the full 12-page family version of this. We'll get that out to everybody so they can see it.
In English and Spanish?
We hope to have the translation done by tomorrow, if possible. I think that there's probably more going on that we may release the English version first and follow up with the Spanish as soon as it's available.
What I heard from Director Lava Cutler, if I may, Beatrice, is a request that at least a short message go out in Spanish so the Spanish speaking parents know that this is coming, even if you don't have it translated yet.
Sure. Yes, we'll, we'll be sure to do that.
Great. All righty then. So let's move to the next item, 12.2, is the Updated Budget Development Calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, Director Hemp?
You're mute. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I just want to think for super quickly before we moved on from talking about all of that stuff that we were talking about, you know, short term things and stuff that's coming up soon. But I just kind of wanted to open this up to thought and we don't have to like come up with anything right now, just like those who are watching and then all of us on the board as well, just, um, there's, I'm sure that everyone's kind of felt this a little bit, but there are definitely some, you know, wounds that are coming out of this in terms of like community and like, you know, it, it is sad for some of us that, or actually for most of us that some of our, you know, like last day of high school was on a Thursday and we didn't even know. And that goes for the underclassmen as well too, and I'm sure middle schoolers and elementary schoolers probably too. But I just want us to kind of sit with everyone of any ideas of what we could possibly do moving forward to kind of bring people together later when we can to not necessarily fix the wound, but just kind of make things a little bit, you know, better. Just because I know that a lot of people are hurting over this.
Yeah, I really appreciate the comment. You know, I've had a number of both families and students reach out with very obviously questions from seniors about things like prom and graduation. If things don't change, you know, in terms of direction from health officials, I think we all recognize that those events won't be able to continue. They then have proposed that they just be postponed and not canceled and that we figure out a way when we get out of the woods to reunite and celebrate the accomplishments of seniors. So please know that I'm open to that. I hope that the worst won't come to pass. But we recognize that we're going to have to think flexibly to, to give you all exactly what you deserve as you finish your careers here.
I really appreciate that. But yeah, yeah. I also wonder if families or parents have any ideas or thoughts on it? Who would, you guys can reach out to me. I'm sure that my, my email is posted. I'd love to talk to anyone who has any thoughts or just wants to talk about it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Director Hemp, I, I'm home with a kid who acts, actually a senior in college. And so he's facing a lot of the same struggles. And so, you know, you try, I think people try to, they know that we have no control over this, so try to kind of reconcile themselves that it's, it is the way it is. But obviously, things like your high school graduation are things that many students really look forward to. And it is a point of, you know, of passage. So I appreciate you bringing it up and we will continue to think about that.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I am going to move forward and to 12.2, which is the Updated Budget Development Calendar. And I'm assuming that Assistant Superintendent Foulnesby is going to, is that your item or is that Steven?
No, I'm going to stay on board for this one. And this isn't so much about the numbers as it is trying to recover our budget building process. So I'll just be, wanted to update the board about how we're contemplating trying to get back on track after the blow we've taken.
Okay.
With that, I may jump in. So I'm going to pull up the slide. I'll share my screen so that everybody's able to follow along and anticipate this will be considerably shorter than the last one.
I think you have 20 minutes.
Great.
So that's 10:15.
All right. So again, this, this presentation is meant only to bring the board and members of the public back up to speed about our budget construction process. This was actually the single most important line of work going on in the district prior to COVID-19. And so we don't have the luxury, of course, of letting it go. And so want to figure out how to recover some semblance of a community engagement process and get to the finish line on our budget development. Since March 16th, you've seen the slide, there are quite a bit of things going on in California, but primarily we've been impacted by this anxiety, the shelter in place order and all of these school closures. And all of my colleague superintendents have offered that most of the standard processes in their districts have been interrupted over the last two weeks. That's true for us. We've done no work on this for two weeks and we need to get back to it. Before any of this happened, we had planned to follow this budget engagement calendar. This is a modification of last year's process that involves a whole variety of community engagement committees that includes these alphabet soup of acronyms, the student, but sorry, Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee, Berkeley School Excellent Plan Policy and Oversight Committee, Educator Advisory Committee, the Parent Advisory Committee, the District English Language Advisory Committee, and the PTA Council. All of those committee meetings were disrupted because of what's going on. Just to remind the Board of Education and members of the public where we were in the budget building process. On March 11th, the last time that we were together as a board in a regular, a regular agenda meeting, the board had approved $901,000 in reductions to the general fund. The board had also approved one addition to the general fund that is for a Title IX investigator. And then the board voted to not take action on about $617,000 in shifts from the general fund to a variety of other budget sources. We also have work to do on our LCAP budget. We understand that we have some reductions that we'll need to make to our LCAP budget or some creative budgeting. And this has to do with two things. It's both decreasing in anticipated revenue to the LCAP budget largely as a result of the decrease in the COLA. And then we're experiencing a decline in the number of un-duplicated students here in Berkeley. Right now, we have 255 less than the previous year. And so we've projected out some sort of decrease in, in revenue that amounts to $139,000 this year, $324,000 next year, almost a half a million dollars in '21, '22 for a total combined reduction of $947,000. That's a reduction in anticipated revenue. So just to quickly propose how we want to get back on track with all of this, proposing that we will reconvene the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee on April 14th. That's after break. We'll have to use all of this remote communication technology to pull that off. I'm imagining that will probably be the final convening of the S-BAC for this year. And that we'll do, take on three topics, whether or not there are any additional possible reductions to the general fund, the impact of the school closures on BUSD. I'd like to be able to offer us back a preliminary estimate of what we will spend as a result of all of this. And then a proposal potentially for any additional expenditures for the 2021 school year. In terms of the BSET PNO, we've actually been able to get back on track with our schedule. In fact, we didn't miss a beat. Last night, BSET PNO met remotely to approve two budgets, the Professional Development and Evaluation Budget, and then to hear preliminary budget proposals on libraries, VAPA, and instructional technology. Uh, and then to hear, uh, preliminary budget proposals on libraries, VAPA and instructional technology. And so we're anticipate at the board meeting on April 15th, that we'll be bringing those two BSEP approved budgets to the board for approval. Again, that's the professional development and evaluation, uh, budgets. Uh, and then at this, uh, subsequent board meeting, we'd be bringing some additional budgets to the board for final approval. Uh, in terms of the parent advisory committee and then the district English language advisory committee, uh, we propose to try and get back on track, uh, through Zoom. Uh, with D-LAC on April 14th, with the parent advisory committee on April 16th. Uh, and those particular, uh, committees will focus exclusively on the LCAP budget, on that $5.5 million tranche of funding. Uh, and then I've been in touch as well, um, with a few folks about reconvening our educator advisory committee. So we will tentatively plan to bring that group back together on April 13th again via Zoom. Uh, and that will be deliberations very specifically focused on the LCAP portion of our budget. So what I'm anticipating then is on April 15th, that we will come back, uh, with recommendations for action to the board. Uh, one on general fund recommendations that would include some, uh, potentially some additional reductions. Uh, go back and contemplate transfers from the general fund to other funding sources, uh, and then potentially some expenses. Uh, we'll also then be bringing BSEP budgets for professional development, uh, for evaluation and then for technology libraries and VAPA. They will have been, uh, reviewed and likely approved by PNO prior to the 15th. Um, we'll also then have some additional recommendations for reductions to the LCAP budget, um, I'm hoping. Uh, and then we'll offer to the board a first accounting of some of the expenses associated with COVID-19. Um, so all of this is just to say, we're going to get the, the, the budget roadshow, uh, back together and plan to bring it back to the board when we convene next on the 15th. And that is it.
Fantastic. Um, so, um, I, or do board members raise your hand if you have any questions for Superintendent Stevens? I mean, raise your hand on the, you know, on the participant list. Alright, well, it looks like Superintendent Stevens, that was a great recap. And, oh, Julie is raising her actual hand in life. Yes? Go ahead, Director Stevens.
My real hand I thought was raised as well. I mean, my, my virtual hand. Um, just quick question, as you're developing the budget. Is it, is it wrong to assume that the unfortunate, um, time that we're in might actually pose some savings? And are you, um, looking at that as we're developing the budget on what savings we might actually experience?
Uh, we're gonna try our best. So, uh, again, right now we can't, uh, we're not, um, scoring all of the potential expenses. We're keeping track of them, but we haven't sort of accurately tracked them all to the most appropriate revenue source. Um, I do think that in, uh, net, we will have expended more than we save as a result of the work that we're doing. Um, the sheer volume of work to implement the distance learning plan, uh, the potential loss of our fleet of Chromebooks, or at least a portion of it. Uh, replacement costs related to books that will be, um, also lending out, uh, or giving away. Uh, all of those things, um, I think represent costs. Very likely savings will come about in the form of professional development plans that we weren't able to finish. Uh, but there won't be any staff savings. We're committed to paying for all of our staff through the entirety of the school closure period in keeping with the governor's directives to all public schools to, to, to keep paying. So we'll see how we, how it plays out in the end.
So can I, just a quick follow-up? In the sense of, um, if the Senate, if, if the federal legislation passes.
It does pass.
Okay, pass, thanks. Um, where the extended, um, EDD unemployment for full salary goes through, are we still committed to us paying our employees or is there an opportunity to leverage EDD at all?
Uh, it'll depend on the, the employee type, but all of our BUSD employees were committed to paying through the entirety of, of the school closure event. Um, we've got a number of like ancillary service providers, so contractors. Um, and then even, um, I'd call them fourth-party contractors. These are folks who are subcontracting to folks who are subcontract, or who are contractors. Those are folks very likely who are going to have to lay off, uh, the people. We can't make those kinds of financial commitments to employees that are uh, peripheral to our organization. But right now, um, our plan is to pay all of our employees through the, through the school closure event and, and not lay anybody off.
Okay, other questions for Director Stevens or Superintendent Stevens? Or Assistant Superintendent Fowlesby, is there anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay. I can answer, I can ask later.
Actually, um, Dr. Stevens is absolutely correct. Senate Bill 107, we're committed to paying our employees and our contractors, um, because the state is going to be holding us harmless in terms of our funding. And they're in turn requesting us to, um, to pay our contractors and our employees during the school closure. So at this point, I don't, I have not seen any savings. We're giving a 5% differential for staff who've been asked to work. So that's an additional cost and I'm sure IT, um, cost will, um, go up as well. But we're monitoring it and will report back to the board.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Fowlesby. Um, Director Leva Cutler, did you have a question? I think we have time for one more.
You know, I was just curious in terms of, um, people like who are bus drivers, um, who, you know, are bus drivers, who else are gardeners and I know our custodial staff are working on, you know, on our facilities. But very, you know, in terms of where can we find things for, for our bus drivers, for instance?
Yeah, we're, um, I, uh, so again, all of our employees are being paid. So bus drivers right now obviously aren't transporting children around the city. They are being paid nonetheless. Um, you can see how much work we've been doing just to make sure that we organize our teaching ranks. And bit by bit, we're sort of, uh, uh, moving through employee groups to think about the best way that they can serve the district under these conditions. Again, our commitment was that nobody would be financially penalized because of a situation that's outside of their control. And we're trying to figure, uh, figure out sort of, uh, work for employee groups that is possible, um, under the current circumstances. We just hadn't ever expected that we've had employee groups under these circumstances.
Thank you. Um, direct, I actually just noticed that Director Brown and Vice President Alper have their hands up. Um, and so Director Brown?
No, that was a mistake.
Oh, that was a mistake. Vice President Alper?
Um, sorry. Uh, yeah, I mean, I was, I wasn't gonna say anything, but, um, and I know I've kind of said this before, but since we're going into a new, like changed budget, um, calendar. You know, to me, the, I mean, I appreciate the, the, the accounting that it sounds like we're gonna do in terms of how much more we're paying for things that we didn't expect to and potentially what we're not paying and saving. But just seems, just seems like, um, really likely that the state budget is going to take a huge hit, um, that the COLAs that we are expecting could very easily be decreased even to zero in, in, you know, in the coming year. That Prop 13 reform seems much less likely even to get on the ballot, um, now. And, and that, well, so whatever, whatever possi- it doesn't seem like our staff thinks that we're gonna save money through this, even if we did, or, or, if, that might end up being a wash, but it seems whatever that number is, is gonna be dwarfed by potential cuts to our, the revenue that we, and so, um, I just, just so that it's not a, like a surprise, I mean, I do, I know I sound like our former colleague, Josh Janelson saying this, but as one board member, I just want to sort of put my sort of marker down that going forward. I, I can't, I, I don't, I can't, I don't think that I would be able to support certainly any significant new ongoing expense that wasn't directly related to this crisis because we're gonna have to make, um, such extensive, we were already going to have to make such extensive cuts next year, even before this. That it just seems irresponsible of me to, to, um, contemplate new as change. Um, so anyway, I, I shouldn't say irresponsible that without having heard more about them, but I'm just really nervous about what our budget situation is gonna be in, in the fall and that. And I know, and I'm sure that Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Fowlesby will be hearing more from the state. But it seems like modeling what lower COLAs would look like in terms of the cuts we would have to make to balance our budget might be something that is worth doing so that we can really see what if the cold goes down to 2%? Or next year it's at 0%. You know, what would that really mean for us? Cause we went through that in 2008. I wasn't on the board, but some of you were. Anyway, so I just wanted to kind of make that comment. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Ty. Um, what, um, Assistant Superintendent Fowlesby, do you have? Or Director, I mean Superintendent Stevens, either of you have a response to that?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that it's, it's sort of a wise stance to adopt. We're all watching as the stock market falls apart. Um, we're watching what we anticipate to be large-scale unemployment as a result of COVID-19, which just means, um, slowed economy and slowed tax revenue. Um, that ultimately turns into slowed revenue for the schools. Um, so I do think that, um, sort of sounding a note of caution is really appropriate at this moment. We just don't know what's coming.
Okay, so that's, I'm gonna close that item. And now we're going to the second opportunity for.
President Appel?
Yes?
I think that one, so, so it was an action item.
I know, but there's no action to be taken.
We don't, we're not approving the calendar?
Um, sorry, sorry, again, um,
Oh, okay.
Same as the last time. I, I
Okay, sorry.
Hadn't proposed to, uh, request an action from the board.
Okay, my fault, sorry.
No, you're right, there are action items, but it's just like, because now in this current stance, we can only take action if it's on the agenda as such, we can't take action, so. But thank you for, for mentioning that. Um, so now I'm gonna go to the open session, public testimony, second opportunity. And so if there are any of you attendees who want to to make public comment, um, please raise your hand now. There's 51 of you attendees left, so maybe somebody wants to say something. Well, apparently not, so, um, that's okay. Um, and then I, do any of the board members want to make any additional comments?
No, just as a reminder that all of us can hold, um, office hours through Zoom or through, you know, people calling us up too.
That's true. And my, actually, my office hours are, are supposed to be this Sunday. So, um, I will have to find out from, I'll have to find out from, um, Jay how to, how to host a Zoom meeting and, and then we'll, um, have Carol send them out. And if others can do that too, if you have office hours coming up, we could send it out in one email. It's probably easier.
President Appel, apparently there's a couple of comments. I, somebody, uh, Trish just did in the chat.
Um, I'm sorry. There are two requests for public.
Oh, yeah, you look, some people raised their hand.
Okay, so there are two requests, oh, four requests. Oh, gosh. I am so happy that, um, we did our comments so that you could take time to it. So I'm gonna call on Ingram Murillo first.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello. Well, my wife went to bed, but I'm still awake. My name is Orlando Murillo. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Uh, well, I just want to appreciate everything you guys have done so far and taking the time to, uh, to take the time to explain everything what's going on. And I'm sure this is, you know, new to all of us, but I just want to say thank you for explaining, um, everything that's going on with, with, with the school and my head goes down to the superintendent for, as much as I hate his emails, but I actually appreciate everything that he does to explain to us what's going on. So we can be informed. And, and I just hope that whatever it is that we are working on, that we help those who are in needs of, I think somebody asked a question about how we're gonna, uh, support families who don't have internet, uh, computers and how we're gonna help them out. And so I just want to make sure that we don't leave those families behind. Some of us are in a better, uh, position, in a better place to assist and help our children. And there are some of those who are not. I just want to, um, address that and, and it has been addressed before. I just want to make sure that, uh, we keep those families in mind and they're very important to us as much as everybody else. So I just want to say thank you and I appreciate everything you've done. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Mr. Murillo. Um, next I have Natalie Lavanda. Um, Jay, can you, oh, talking permitted. Um, Natalie, I think you're still muted. Maybe on your computer? Can you unmute yourself and then?
Okay, yes. Can you hear me now?
Now we can, yes.
Great. Hi. Uh, first of all, I want to, um, thank all of you for all your hard work. I know these are very, very difficult times and I think you're doing a great job. My understanding, uh, from Superintendent Stevens is that there's gonna be, uh, there's not gonna be face-to-face instruction or the face-to-face instruction is gonna be very extremely limited. And I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering why that is, because I know that some districts, let alone the private schools, um, have been able to put together, uh, face-to-face instruction on a daily basis. For example, um, Oakland Unified School District, I know that, um, they meet, uh, each class and it's, I, I think it's for the high school, at the high school level. They meet each class, each subject meets one to three times a week, uh, at least online, face-to-face. Uh, I know Piedmont is doing the same. So I guess I'm wondering, my question is, what is preventing our district from implementing similar practices?
Thank you, um, Natalie. We, we don't usually answer questions during public comment, but I do want to allow Superintendent Stevens the opportunity to clarify.
Thanks, President Appel. Um, so, uh, the, the examples that the, um, the caller is citing have largely to do with the high school. Uh, and they're very similar to the plans that we're offering as well. If you think about high school students having multiple classes, each of those instructors offering an office hours. Um, if you, um, put those into the week, we're talking about multiple contacts for educators across the span of the week. Um, I don't hear that it's that much different than other district plans. Uh, we have been taking a lot of care to pull up district plans when they're available. Uh, not a lot of districts have actually sort of gone live with written plans yet. And so it's difficult to do the compare contrast, although we certainly hear stories about, um, about either individual educators or other districts and their plans as well. Um, so we think especially the, the, um, the secondary level, the plan will be quite comparable. Um, and then, uh, when we contemplate not every individual educator creating their own content, but having these curated teams. Um, we actually think that we'll be able to expand the quality of offerings across the entire district and reduce some of the variability that I think was probably part of some other districts' plans. So we'll see how it goes. Um, uh, only time will tell as we try to put this into place, whether or not it's working in the way that we hope.
Okay, so I have one more speaker, oh, two more. So we're going to go to Laura Babbitt and, um, and Robert Collier and then Mo, and then that's it for the night.
Hello, this is Laura Babbitt. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give a quick comment regarding the parent advisory committee and the timing of the budget meetings. Uh, just noting that our meeting is the day after information is already being presented to the school board directors. And, um, that kind of eliminates us from being able to give advisory comments to the board during our five minutes. So I'm just hoping in the future, as we do planning, that we can make sure that the parent advisory committee has had a chance to weigh on these, weigh in on these things before they go before the board as well.
So I think that's a really helpful comment, Laura, and maybe somebody will work with you. I'm not sure how that works, but maybe someone will work with you to figure out what, a way to, um, address that. Now, next I'm gonna call on Robert Collier and then Mo.
Hi, good evening. Um, thanks for this, uh, great, uh, this great discussion. Wanted to follow up on the issue of interactivity of the meetings themselves. Um, and obviously this is a whole new frontier for all. new frontier for all of us, or at least it is for me. Regarding chat, you disabled chat. You mentioned that you're planning on disabling the Q and A, and I totally understand why you'd want to do so. They are wonderful ways of getting lots of people's questions answered in real time. And at, at the PT Council meeting Monday night, this is the first time, time I had ever done one of these webinars. But the Q, and I was expecting the Q and A and the chat functions to be really chaotic and dysfunctional. But actually, they were great. They worked out really well. And great, we were all well behaved. And nobody was, you know, misbehaving on those, either of those two dialogue sessions. But they worked great. And so I realize there are risks to having interactivity, and it is not your, it doesn't fit your rulebook. This is not how traditional school board meetings are run, have been run. And you have to stick to those rules. But going forward, I would simply invite you to, you know, consider flex, you know, making those rules flexible, because these are, and just experimenting, continuing to experiment a bit with these tools, because they can be really useful for, for participants and the organizers as well, as a way of sharing information in real time quickly. On the side, you don't want to be too distracting. And you don't want to take other risks as well. But keep it in mind. And, you know, we, these webinars and this remote process may last for quite a while this spring, and it may come back to us again next year. So this is not necessarily a short-term process. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. One of my board member colleagues just reminded me that the problem is that our restrictions are about the Brown Act. And, but, you know, I agree that the questions are great. And so we'll come up with a way to try to address them, working with the, with the board. I mean, with this, with the administration. Okay, oops. Okay, so I'm gonna, I think, unless there's somebody else who has a dying comment they want to make, Mo is next. And so I think we're going to wrap up with Mo unless, you know, if there's somebody else who wants to talk, just raise your hand, and we have a little bit more time. But Mo, why don't you go ahead?
Great. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, so I'm hearing a lot of anxiety around this idea of the synchronized learning opportunities. And also with this idea that teachers could quickly become sick and then not have subs available for those classroom supports. And so what I think is really beautiful is that Berkeley Unified School District has spent a lot of time cultivating very beautiful relationships with partners and organizations and outside vendors that are also in education and enrichment. And I'm just wondering if there is any plan or interest in working with those partners around developing these distance learning plans and inviting them to be thought, thought partners in this process, because so many of those groups, like I said, they already have strong relationships with Berkeley Unified School Districts, and they already have curriculum that is great, appropriate, and developed. And so I'm just wondering if that is a relationship that can still be utilized to, in order to keep these academic plans going, and support teachers with enrichment, especially in that, like, elementary and middle school level, where those students and parents are needing a lot more support with their student.
Thank you, Mo. Now, I, I realize that I did this a little early, but I do want to give board members a chance to make a final comments, if you want to, as well as Superintendent Stevens. And if anybody else from this, from the administration wants to make some final comments, just raise your hand on the panelists, the participant panelist list. Ty, your hand is up. Did you want to say something?
Sorry, no.
Okay. Well, with that being said, at 10:24, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. And I want to thank everybody for engaging in this new technology. And I think it went really well. So.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.